Monthly meeting Wednesday, February 21st. And let's start with a roll call.
Morning, everyone. Lyle Johnson.
Here.
Richard Werner.
Here.
Tom Lovett. Not here today. Tammy Colby.
Good morning, everyone.
Aleah Wilburn. I know she's here.
I saw Aleah on there. Yeah, I want to check her mic. Her Mohammed Job.
Yep.
Kim Gleason.
Good morning.
Jenna O'Farrell.
Here.
Grace Feron.
I'm here.
Chair Samuelson.
Here. Good morning. And did we get Aleah back?
Aleah, you want to check your mic?
She said I'm sure I'm going to try to rejoin.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing anyone. All right, so I will now move to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, you can, if you're on the Teams platform, press this hand icon to raise your hand, or if you're calling in, press star five to raise your hand. Oh, and I do see Alyssa Chen.
Hey, everyone. Can I just go ahead?
Yes, you may. Good morning.
Great. Everyone, good morning. My name's Alyssa Chen. I live in Burlington, Vermont. I'm a former public school educator and current co-coordinator at the Education Justice Coalition of Vermont. I was so excited to see the EQS standards passed last May at the state board level, and it wasn't until kind of afterwards that I understood it still had multiple processes to go through. And so I'm just calling in today to ensure that it remains intact. There was a very diverse and representative group from backgrounds and various stakeholders, and I think it's important that we really value and uplift their work. And so a couple of specific things. I'm here to ask you to keep the definition of discrimination as it was initially voted on. This definition creates more clarity and also includes a bigger class of students. For example, the new definition includes caste and socioeconomic status. This language would ensure that students from low-income backgrounds can access all services at school and also protect them from being bullied about their socioeconomic status. Oftentimes, low-income students are left out of field trips or burdened to attend because of financial background, just to give one example. In 2022, 37% of Vermont students qualified as free and reduced lunch in Vermont, and we need to ensure these students have access to the same things that other students have, such as project-based and proficiency-based learning opportunities. I also heard that EQS is going through this rulemaking process, and some are trying to advocate to water down or have EQS match the needs of independent schools. And I think it's really important that we ensure true inclusion and equity and keep the recommended EQS intact because of, again, all the stakeholders or all the student groups, students that they represent. And so I'm really here to just encourage you to please pass EQS as recommended by the extremely diverse group of stakeholders that worked on the document and not to cater to the needs of independent schools in a way that waters down the work. And thanks so much for allowing me to be here. I appreciate all the work that you all are doing on this and excited to see it pass.
Thank you so much for your comments. If you were reading something and you'd like to submit that, we can include that with our minutes. Do you have Maureen and Suzanne's email addresses? Okay, great. So yeah, please feel free to forward something. We'll include that with our minutes, but thanks again. Okay, any other members of the public who wish to be heard? I'm not seeing anyone. As always, we will leave this open for several minutes and scoot on to the next things. So in the meantime, I'm going to scoot on to item B, which is a motion to approve the draft meeting minutes from January 17th, 2024. Is there a motion?
I'll move that. I'll move to approve the minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mohammed. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving our meeting minutes from January 17th, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion has passed. And I will now entertain a motion to approve the draft minutes from January 23rd, 2024. Anyone who would like to use?
Sorry. Okay, I can second that.
All right, moved by Rich, seconded by Kim. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2024, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions?
I'm staying. It was not there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. All right. The motion has passed. Thank you all again. I'll circle back to public comment. Okay, still not seeing anybody. Okay, so I will move on to board announcements. I've got a few. One, I testified before the Senate Government Ops Committee on January 17th regarding S-55, which is an act relating to authorizing public bodies to meet electronically under Vermont's open meeting law. I didn't have anything prepared that I submitted, so I'm just relaying that. I also testified before Senate Ed on January 18th regarding Rule Series 2200 and included my presentation in the agenda packet. Kind of dusted off what had been previously presented to the board and to ICAR and updated it a little bit. So that's for your information. And then I was again invited to testify before Senate Ed regarding Act One and instead sent them a memo, which again was included in the agenda packet that was addressing some non- correcting the record relating to board activity and addressing some of the nondiscrimination provisions of EQS and 2200. So that too is in your agenda packet. Are there any other board announcements?
Okay.
I'm wondering, Jennifer, because I haven't been as closely attentive to everything moving regarding education right now. Do you have any other legislative updates or can we make that a standing item during session for our board meetings? It would be helpful.
Yeah, that's a good question. We had talked about this at the agenda prep meeting, and I'll just forecast what we're planning to do is a mid-session legislative update at our March meeting. And then we'll do an end-of-legislative session update in May, probably, just to, you know, get an update from the agency with regard to, you know, what's going on in the legislature.
Just to follow up on that, it just occurs to me that, like, in our roles and responsibilities, it includes informing legislation. So my preference would be that we have sort of ongoing updates on that topic because, as we know, the legislation moves so quickly. And to help support you when you're called in to testify, it would be great if structurally we had something in place that keeps us all informed when these things are happening. As the co-chair of EQS, I hadn't been aware that you had been asked to testify in 2200 or EQS, so I hadn't seen your written submission until looking at the package last night. So I think a more for sort of formulaic manner of keeping us informed of legislation and the occasions where we're being called on to inform legislation or where perhaps we need to would be really helpful for us as a board and a body.
Yeah, and that's a really hard thing. I never know when I'm going to get called to testify, and I don't know what I'm going to be called to testify on. And frankly, like, when I got the invitation from the Government Ops Committee, I had not anticipated, you know, that was sort of nothing to do necessarily with State Board of Ed other than, you know, it implicates open meeting law. So, but I never know when I'm going to get called to testify. And, you know, with the Act One, I think I was asked on a Friday and submitted that memo the following Monday. I mean, it's, as you know, it's a pretty quick turnaround when you're asked to testify. So I don't really have a better answer for that just because I'm not in control of when I'm asked to testify or when I'm being asked to testify about.
Yeah, no, I was just thinking structurally for our work and as a matter of sort of practice, if we're minimally as co-chairs, Tammy and I could have been copied on that, but the full board could be copied in real time on submitted written testimony as one manner of approaching it. But, and this will be my last legislative session. I think that I'll be on this board. I think maybe Jenna and I have one. This is one more year of our service. But I think that there might be the opportunity to inform sort of what could be anticipated in the legislature by a discussion of those things that we could anticipate in advance of the session. So there's broad guidance that aligns with sort of our positions or understandings as a full board, knowing that it's very dynamic and trusting that you could keep us informed via copies on submitted testimony, whether in person or writing, on a real-time basis. I appreciate how difficult it is. It's a dynamic time during the session, but I think that there are probably just process and practice that could be improved to keep us better informed.
Yeah, and I'm sorry. I mean, that was just a, you know, an oversight on my part that I didn't forward that. I think I forwarded out on Thursday last week, and it was just, personally, I had a busy week last week, so it just, it didn't even hit my radar. But I'm sorry about that. Lyle?
Things change very quickly at the beginning of the session, for sure. And I too, I guess, would like to get, just even knowing that someone is testifying, I think probably is a great, great thing. So, but I also recognize, having had this happen to me in the past, an hour from now, would you like to come and talk to this committee? And then bang, you're there, and then you're on to your day job again. So I recognize how difficult it is to keep the communication going as well as everyone would really like to have it, I guess. But, and again, things change very quickly. I like the idea of a 15-minute update. Sounds like we're going to get one in March of what's happening in the legislature. I don't know that we have any role right now in the debate over funding, but it would be nice to know from the agency's standpoint, at least, where, how they're feeling about that because we do get asked, so.
And maybe what we can do is I will go back and ask the agency if maybe we could do a beginning of legislative session, middle of legislative session, end of legislative session. Because I'm sure they're following, you know, they've got the resources and the staff. You know, what is coming up in a way that, you know, personally, I can't. So maybe that would be a better way to frame the conversation going forward. Tammy?
Yeah, I've been in the hot seat on that too, right? You sort of get, it's like the bat phone goes off, and you got to show up and it's sort of, you know, you go. It would be great to just know that was going on to the right hand and the left hand, know what they're doing, right? So that, you know, if one of us gets a question about, oh, Jennifer was in, it would just be nice to be able to know that that was going on. We do, though, I think, have a role some tangentially in the funding questions that are on the table right now because of our role in the construction aid, right? And sort of rate-setting and things along those lines. So we're not entirely out of it and to the extent that the legislature gets more involved in thinking about construction aid, we may be more, we may need to be more involved in that. I think we just have to see how that evolves. So I would just say that that would be an instance where sort of an end-of-session or mid-session update might not work very well for us. I think we, you know, to the extent that there are specific board interests, I think then sort of this beginning, middle, and end doesn't work that well. And the only one I can think of, Lyle, is potentially construction aid right now. But, you know, if in fact the legislature was to start a discussion around modifying the definitions in Act One, something, you know, I know Jennifer and I testified on that. I think that would warrant an update that's not, you know, sort of a beginning, middle, and end. I think we would need to, it would be helpful to know that the legislature has reached out or is making some specific efforts on that.
So in two points, I mean, one is, you know, when I hear legislative update, I'm thinking about sort of broadly, what's going on in the legislature that impacts the State Board of Ed? I think that's different than, you know, when I'm being asked to testify or I submit something and then share that out with the board. I mean, I think of that more as a board update because that's, you know, things that I'm doing. And so I've tried really hard to sort of, you know, when I know that I'm being called to do something, I forecast it to the board. When I've done something, I report back to the board just to keep those, you know, channels of communication open. But I think, you know, the legislative update about, you know, what's going on in the General Assembly and what's the status of different bills, I wouldn't be the person to provide that information, and I think that's really more a question for the agency. Richard?
So maybe, you know, I don't know if anybody else is still a member of a school board, but the VSA sends out a weekly update. Maybe, you know, we could talk with them and maybe they'll be generous enough for those board members who aren't on, who aren't on a board to get those because they're pretty, I mean, they're slanted towards the VSA stuff, but they kind of give you a pretty good update of everything. And I think maybe that would help people. And then when you do the agenda, if we see there was something being discussed, we can ask that that get added to the agenda.
And we had this conversation last year, and you're right. I mean, the VSA does give a very comprehensive weekly update. And, you know, to your point, they are, you know, they have their positions. And so the way we left it last year, Rich, was that board members want to be included on their email list. They are welcome to email the VSA and request that. It didn't feel appropriate given that they do advocate for certain positions, which may or may not be aligned with our other stakeholders, that we would sort of select them over other stakeholders. That didn't feel appropriate. But, you know, if board members individually want to do that, I think that's completely fine.
Well, and then I don't know what the other stakeholder groups are, but maybe it'd be interesting if we could get all of them, you know, sent to us. And I don't know how many there are because I don't ever remember seeing anything from like the superintendent to the principals association, but maybe there is.
Rich, theirs is a, I'm sorry, it's Kim, but I had my hand raised for the same reason because the VSA's is not just VSA. It's a legislative report commissioned for their collective. So I think it's all the Vs. And they, I, they actually like hire a law student, I think, that does that during the session, something to that effect. I don't remember exactly the structure of it. And they have offered to make that available, as Jennifer said, to those who've inquired about it. And I, I think having a weekly update on what's moving informs us enough to be able to ask even questions. But again, I'll reiterate that it is in our roles and responsibilities through statute that we inform legislation related to education matters over which we may have some, you know, some consideration. And so I think having a standing item during the legislative session that is just legislative update could be the 10 minutes that we're talking about, and it could just be a skeleton, here's the bills, or it could be, you know, if you are feeling, Jennifer, that the VSA or the collectives version is not representing facts as you understand them, then at least as a place to start. And you could add whatever other color commentary you would want to, but it usually delineates by bill what's going on and what's moving and what might relate to, you know, education for any of those groups. And I think it's a, it might be a place to start. I think during the legislative session, not having a standing item on legislative update that could hold 10 minutes on the schedule seems as though it runs the risk of us not all having common information about bodies of legislation that we would have by statute a responsibility to inform or maybe you may be called in to speak to and want some guidance from us, so it would put a placeholder. I think three times a session is inadequate.
So, I mean, again, we did have this conversation last year. I see that Heather has joined us. And, you know, the thing is, is I know that there is a update that comes through the agency. There were some concerns about, you know, attorney-client privilege. The governor's office also has a weekly update. Again, there were concerns about attorney-client privilege. So I, I mean, I'd have to dust off the conversation from a year ago. But I do remember that I spoke with the agency and with the governor's office, and what we landed on was that there would be a legislative, you know, we did the end-of-legislative session update last year. And, you know, in speaking with the agency this year, they offered the mid-session report as well. So it's not as simple as just, you know, having the agency tack us on to whatever they're including in their weekly update. They would have to peel stuff off to be distributed and included in our agenda packet. But, you know, that, that to me, having something come from the agency feels much more appropriate than, you know, coming from any stakeholder group. Let me pause there. Tammy, I see your hand is raised, but Heather, I don't know if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I think my sense is exactly what you just said, Jennifer. You know, we have talked about this quite a bit over the past few years. You know, I think it's important to note that there's a real shift in the agency when the legislative session happens, and we become much more a creature of the governor's office, I guess I would say, because particularly with the legislative session. So, and we don't have, we definitely do not have staffing to provide like a weekly update or that kind of thing. So what we've come up with is that it fits well to have a mid-session sort of like touch point with the board because, for instance, I don't think it's going to work this year, but ideally, it would be during town meeting week because that's when the legislature's off. And so that's a good time for the agency to be able to really have, you know, the board in mind and figure out what, and maybe even ask the board, like, what topics are you interested in hearing about? I am also trying to give you legislative updates. I have some today. So I think that using the secretary's updates might be a tool for that as well. But, yeah, I mean, it's just not as easy as folks think. So those daily updates are for the governor. They're not, you know, they're not for general knowledge or the public. And they're, you know, they are under executive privilege for that reason. They're much more, I would say, about sort of strategizing than, than anything else. And I don't think that would be appropriate to share with the, with any board because it really is the governor's information. But I think, you know, we can, I mean, that's what we're planning. And, you know, I'm interested in hearing some other solutions, but at this point, we don't have the capacity to do regular updates, like throughout the legislative session. You know, a lot of work, actually, our regular work gets kind of deprioritized in legislative session. So to add more to it is a really tough call for me, I think. Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but it's our reality too, I would say.
Thanks. Tammy?
I think, I know we have a lot to cover today, so maybe I'll try to summarize. I think I'm hearing three things. One, that it would be helpful that there's some sort of feedback loop, Jennifer, when you get asked to testify or provide materials and sort of share that out. So people, right hand and left hand know what's going on. I think there is this interest in.
I have.
Yeah, no, I, well, what I'm hearing is maybe in real time. The second thing is that I'm hearing is that the legislative updates are, you know, just general legislative updates for perhaps at the beginning, middle, and the end is the best we can do under circumstances in that board members need to sort of seek their own counsel and their own strategies for monitoring in the interim. And then third, to the extent, the thing that I'm less clear on, but it does sound like we do need some sort of specific sort of update or monitoring when there are issues that are specific to the board's interest, right? So Heather, to your point, yeah, just general updates might be too much, but I think we need a system for identifying when there is a specific board interest, and the board needs to pay attention to an issue or be aware of an issue or a discussion that's going on. And so it seems like we have three buckets that have gotten lumped in under this umbrella of legislative updates, and each of them requires a different solution.
Thanks. Kim?
I am, again, I guess I'll just go back to the question and to Tammy's point. It sounds like there's an agreement that we'll get regular updates. I just, it is in our roles and responsibilities, just like working through regulation, which is, has been the center of all of our work. So I think that to help you as the chair, who's going to get called in, to fulfill our obligations under statute, it, I think that we should find some manner of even linking for the board to statutes that relate to education. So, I mean, that is how I'm recalling the legislative updates to look coming from the VSA. They include the link to the statute. They include their summary of what the current status is. And that strikes me as something that just would be appropriate given our roles and responsibilities. And it could be supportive to you when you're called in on the fly. And I guess, you know, for next year, I think it would be great if we may be invited in the chairs of the committees in December so that we would have a sense of what is to be anticipated. And then we'd have the opportunity to have a discussion as a full board regarding, given what's anticipated, our understanding of our role in it and give you some guidance on our position on things. That would seem supportive. I know in other organizations, it's done by virtue of like resolutions. So that guides how the VSA, VSA, VPA are able to frame their testimonies around what their membership has spoken to. I think it'd be a model that could work with us without resolution, but rather with a thoughtful conversation in December or January on that which we can anticipate. So structurally, I think that'd be helpful. I'm going to drop in the meeting chat Kerry Lamb's address for those who may want to request to be included in the legislative update that that coalition of the Vs, I guess, produce weekly. And that's klamb@vtvspa.org, but I'm going to drop it in. Yeah.
Thank you. And I like the idea of inviting in the chairs of House and Senate Ed. You know, if they have the availability at our December meeting, that might be a good way to, you know, obviously, they're going to have a better idea than I would about what they anticipate coming down the pike. So I will make a note of that and put that on my to-do list for next fall to reach out to them. And even, you know, to forecast now that maybe this is something that, you know, they can be looking forward to in the fall to receive an invitation from the board. All right. Any other board announcements? I'm not seeing any. Oh, Lyle?
Just one because I can't help myself. The area robotics teams in the state of Vermont have received their challenge, and they're all working diligently towards trying to get to Houston for the world competition. It's pretty exciting to watch. They've combined three different challenges from three different years. And they have robots now that need to pick things up, throw things, make music, and climb. And so it's, uh, exciting to watch coders, electricians, um, manufacturers all coming together in a robot.
So when do they, if they, if they get to go to Worlds?
That would be during April vacation for, well, for us. I don't know about everybody else, but it's like the week of the fifteenth of April.
So are they going to the Worlds or are they still like doing the next step to find out if they've been selected?
They need to compete to be eligible to go. So we, I think they all hope that they will be eligible, but it remains to be seen. It's a pretty strict competition. It's, um, very challenging. But they're having fun.
Are there any more, um, competitions locally, um, before they would go off to Houston?
Not locally. There'll be competitions at W P I, at the big E. There may be another one. There, um, that's where the big events take place. There'll be sixty, seventy teams at any of these events. So it needs a pretty large venue. Yep.
Awesome.
Lots of kids, lots of parents, lots of excitement. Our Vermont world-class teams.
Well, thank you for working on that. All right. Any other board announcements? I'm not seeing any. Um, I'm going to circle back one last time to public comment. If there are any members of the public who wish to be heard, to either raise your hand if you're on the Teams platform or star five if you're calling in. And I'm not seeing any there. So, um, I will now turn it over to Aleah and Gray for the student report. And Aleah, I'll start with you because you two have been up in Montpelier recently.
I've been in Montpelier.
I thought, didn't you testify before the House? Or was that virtual?
No, uh, someone sent me an email and I replied back to their email.
Okay.
So I, I should have known what you were talking about. Um, sorry, I don't know what I'm trying to say here. Um, student report. At school, it's kind of, it's playoff weeks for basketball. I'm a basketball player, so I'm going to talk about basketball. Our boys are, they just locked in their fourth seed. Um, and so they have their first playoff game tonight against U thirty-two. Girls, we were seventeen and one, and then yesterday we lost our second game. So now we're seventeen and two um, on our senior night. So that was, that was nice. Um, still, still top seed though, so we'll see how it goes. Um, we have playoff next week and we have break next week. School-wise, um, seniors are currently either committing to their colleges, um, or have already committed. Um, and it's kind of just scholarship stuff now. So that's always fun. And I don't know, I feel like, I feel like that's really all that's going on right now in school. It's just basketball and and doing, doing scholarships and stuff. Yeah.
Do you, have we asked, do you know your plans for next year?
I do. So I just committed to Wells College, which is in Aurora, New York. Thank you. I'm going to be playing basketball there and possibly volleyball. Thank you. Um, I'm planning to major in political science and either minor in law or education. In hopes of either going to law school and then becoming an immigration lawyer or becoming a diversity, equity, inclusion coordinator at schools.
Wow. That's really exciting. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It has to feel really good, too.
Yes, yes. Finally about to be done with high school and on to the next chapter of my life. It's going to be great.
All right. Thank you. Um, any questions for Aleah before we move on to Gray? Uh, Kim?
I just wanted to thank you, Aleah, for all the ways that you have offered voice to really important matters going on in the state and you have really beautifully shared your stories to help inform things in really impactful ways. So I just want to say thank you. I'm sure each time you have to do that is not necessarily the easiest thing to have to do, but I think it has brought light in a really impactful way. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mohammed?
Uh, let the dream come true, Aleah. Good work. Keep it up. Keep it up. You can do it.
Thank you. Okay. Well, Gray, I will turn it over to you. We got a little preview at the beginning of their meeting.
Yeah, I was going to say to anyone who was there right at the beginning of the meeting, I already talked a little bit about track. I mean, there are things going on with all the sports at Virgens, but mostly they're kind of winding down into final games for almost everybody. And then for anyone who missed it before, for track, we've been not doing anything for a while, but we're preparing for New England's and me and three other guys are going, not this weekend, but the weekend after that down to Boston for New England. So I'm excited for that. Then our musical is in about a month. Our musical is going to be Mamma Mia. And that kind of, that eats up a lot of the time at the school because Virginia's isn't a very big school. So I'd imagine like a quarter of the high school is involved in the musical. And other things, the National Honor Society is doing a blood drive when we get back, oh, we're on break this week. Um, when we get back from break next week is when the blood drive is. Our break is this week, although unfortunately my dad's break, he's a teacher at C V U is the following week. So they don't line up with me and my sisters, which is always unfortunate. Um, so February break is never a break where we do anything. Uh, winter ball just happened and that was, you know, the senior class does winter ball, so that was fun. And then my class, the junior class is planning prom, which will be later. And we're in kind of the more important stages of planning prom at this point. We have locations and stuff like that. Prom is Star Wars themed this year, which everyone thinks will be interesting. And on a school board level, we finalized our budget that we're going to present to the public. So that was the most chaotic thing I've done recently. And yeah, that's about it at Virgens.
So are you guys sticking with your original town meeting day or are you taking advantage of, well, it's not even law yet, but the, the, well, I guess it is still law under the COVID, um, regulations, but are you, are you keeping your town meeting or are you moving the date?
We are, we're keeping all of our town meeting days right now, um, which we talked about and it's kind of, and it's not as finalized as I'd like it to be. Because at our last board meeting, we said, we're not going to change the dates, but we're going to keep it open. But I don't know what that actually means since we're not having another board meeting. So I at least feel like we should have made a decision because it really just means that someone could email and be like, I think we should meet again to move it, which I don't think should be allowed, but whatever. It probably won't happen because I think we're okay with our budget as it is.
Yeah, it, it does make it tricky because I'm also on our school board and, um, you know, we had our last meeting before town meeting last week and really had to come up with contingency plans, knowing that we're not going to have an opportunity to meet again before town meeting. You know, fundamentally decided that we're not moving town meeting and then trying to figure out what sort of directions we can give our superintendent in light of law that isn't even law yet. So, um, it is, it has been an interesting season for sure.
Yeah.
Any questions for Gray? Can I see your hand is up?
Uh, you're muted, I think.
Sorry about that. Go ahead. We should, I should be better at this by now. Um, do you vote from the floor or do you vote by Australian ballot?
Uh, I don't vote at all on the school.
No, I'm sorry. I mean, does your community on town meeting day vote from the floor, present or by a ballot?
Oh, um, I don't know exactly because I have yet to go to any of the town meetings, although I was selected to talk about the budget, which I don't actually know what that will entail. So I'll find out. And maybe I'll get back to you on that of how the process works because I don't know anything about it.
Hey, well, good luck then. You thought it was chaotic so far. It is an interesting time and I, I send out my, uh, thoughts and condolences to the board members out there. As a recovering board member myself, I, I can, I've just been holding my breath for all of you in this very, very dynamic time around something that's one of the single most important things boards do is express their values through a budget that helps fund and inform all the work that happens for the year and to do so in a really dynamic time with the ground shifting beneath you is, um, not enviable in any way, but I express tremendous gratitude for your work, all of you. So thanks.
Any other comments before we close out our student report? All right. Well, Gray and Aleah, thank you both for your updates. Um, they're always fun to listen to and think about. And actually, our local high school is also doing Mamma Mia this year. So it's, it's funny that you both have, um, landed on that. All right. So Heather, I will turn it over to you for the secretary's report.
Sure. Uh, thank you. And, um, good morning, everyone. I'm sorry that I was running a little late this morning, so missed official roll call, but it's nice to see you all. My updates actually coincidentally are largely around legislative, um, updates for you. Um, so a thread of continuity from our earlier conversation, I wanted to let you know, about some of the major policy issues that, um, we're working together with, um, the legislature on. Um, and then, um, give you a little bit of information about what's going on in some other areas where it's a little unclear, sort of if anything's going to come out this session. So the first I wanted to talk about, and we're going to get, um, a presentation from Ruth, um, our Ruth Durkey, our state, um, C T E director, later in the agenda, which is great, but, um, she's, uh, you know, that's a nice prelude to that is that we are working on a pretty substantial, C T E bill that will finally, fingers crossed, hopefully fix our C T E funding problems or at least get us on the path to that. And so the model that we're working with would basically, um, directly allocate, um, C T E funds to the, the C T E centers themselves or their business offices. The idea there is, um, if we move away from a tuitioning model, we don't, we don't have to, that it should actually, uh, remove some pressure at the local level in terms of, um, you know, wh- what is the impact on, um, ascending school if a student goes to C T E or not? So the idea is that these funds would just come off the top of the ed fund, like some of our other, kind of a blocked, um, monies due. Uh, so working on that. But there are other aspects of that C T E bill as well. So, uh, there's a significant push for increasing access, um, for all students to C T E. So the current version, uh, would require that all middle school students have some exposure to C T E. Um, and this is really predicated and modeled on some really amazing programs that, um, are happening around the state, but are not happening everywhere in the state. So as one example, North Country, um, does some really great work where they bring, um, middle school students in to actually come visit the C T E. And, um, I've, I've actually been, um, privileged to actually attend, um, one of those and they're just phenomenal. So they have, you know, they have, students can, um, learn about the health sciences, uh, program. They can learn about, the manufacturing, they can learn about automotive. So, so the C T E sets up these kind of mini stations. Um, and then the, the young students kind of walk around and get, um, a little bit of a taste of what those programs would be. And it's really fun, um, kind of similar to what Lyle was saying about, you know, the robotics. It's really fun to kind of see the engagement, um, for students because it looks really different than, than education and the way they think about it. So, um, it's really kind of fun to see that, that magic happen. Another piece would actually, um, right now, I'm sure this won't be surprising to you all. Uh, it's really hard for school counselors to focus on, um, things like career development. You know, they're, they're definitely still, um, you know, as a whole, helping students do what they need to, to go on to college, for instance, fill out the FAFSA. A lot of them, um, leverage tools like, um, Naviance and things like that. But there is a real gap for a comprehensive career development conversation, um, for most students. And, and we're kind of out of step, I would say, with other states, um, you know, states like Tennessee, they just have a really robust system for that. And it's something that we've really, um, I think because of other acute need, um, in our schools, we've really kind of lost that. So our school counselors just don't have the capacity to be able to do some of that more mundane, very kind of old school, if you will, school counseling role such as like, let's, let's, um, deploy, um, career, you know, uh, career skills assessments for all students and things like that. So this bill would actually, uh, require that the C T E centers, um, partner and are leveraged. And we're still working some of those details out, but that the C T E centers, um, would actually, um, assist in each, uh, local school board would come up with a, um, career development plan that, that all students, um, would, um, develop on their own and would, um, you know, it would really help them. So it goes also hand in hand with the P L P, the personalized learning plan. And it's just making sure that there's a future kind of trajectory also, um, that aligns with, uh, that P L P work. I think, um, Kim, it looks like you have a question.
Thanks, Heather. Um, I'm just wondering, because it's actually come up as we've worked through E Q S. These, um, expectations are for all publicly funded students. So that, um, those who are publicly funded, attending a private middle school, for instance, they would, there would be a similar expectation that they would have exposure to C T E as an option?
Well, it's really, um, I'd have to think about that. It's, you know, it's certainly aimed at students in our public schools because that's what, like ninety percent of our kids. And, but yes, um, for the two C T E centers that we have in the state, L I and St. John's Berry. I mean, they would be required to, um, follow these rules as well. So it's really aimed at like holding the C T E centers and their sending, their local sending districts accountable to, to do this work together. So it, it hasn't really been framed around finding every single student that might be linked with, um, that might be tuitioned to, for instance, a private school. I think what's really critical is that we start by, you know, this is a big change in this funding. And so I think we start there and then we'll actually, as we, um, implement it, some of the other questions that are important will arise. Um, but I don't want, I don't want us to focus on perfection right now because we will lose the steam and impetus to actually make these changes to the full system. So it's an important question, but it's not, um, I think it's something that we need to actually focus on where the bulk of our students are first and get that working and then figure out how all students get access to this.
Okay. I guess I would encourage that that's a consideration going into the legislation because I would think that, the L A, for instance, if that's where the accountability is that you're talking about, holding the tech centers and the L A is accountable for ensuring that students are, have the full scope of options. From seventh grade on, it's a required P L P, right? That that, those students don't know what they don't know. Those families don't know what they don't know. The importance of the opportunities through career and technical education are, have been articulated by this governor. And I think many are, including, um, our, our workforce development folks, um, as critically important. So it would seem to not make any sense to carve out any publicly funded student from the process. So to whatever extent, um, that can inform this work, I don't, I can't imagine how that could tank the work. I think we should remind ourselves that, um, there should be substantial weight in, in the intention and not, not from an exclusionary standpoint, feel concerned about approaching it for all publicly funded students.
Again, I don't think this is from an exclusionary standpoint. I think it's from a practical standpoint. For instance, um, I'd have to go back and look. I don't know that students who are tuitioned into private schools are required to have a P L P. I'd have to go back and look at that. And so they're not, Jenna is saying. And so that's why we're framing this around what we currently have under Act seventy-seven. And by the way, it's not just the L A's that are, um, held accountable here. It's a, it's really a partnership between the C T Es and the L A's. And that's really where the magic happens. Um, so I just want to clarify that. Because I think that perhaps what I said originally was coming across, not in the way that I meant it to.
I started from my sunlight. It's kind of this weird thing. Um, I, I often, I, I don't know, and Heather, maybe, I know it doesn't sound like that you may have this in front of you, but I think a lot of high schools already do this. I think there's already outreach efforts to trans- I think there's already outreach efforts to transition eighth graders, and I think it's a best practice. And I know in St. John's Berry Academy has been doing it for over a decade. Eighth graders go up and they do a rotation in culinary, they do a rotation in woodworking, and a rotation in one of the others, I forget, there's three, and it's been going on for over ten years. And I think um in our area, where we have a lot of independent middle schools, they are also invited to participate, and the outreach is there. It's really just really, I think, strong practice in terms of how children transition, you know, between schools. And I, I don't think this is, maybe it's gonna formalize something, but like, I, I think this probably happens in a lot of places where students have the availability as part of filling out their paperwork and meeting. My question wasn't around this, so my question was more for transitioning the role of career counseling to the CTE centers. And Heather, my question is around if you have students who don't take any CTE courses and then suddenly are now meeting with a CTE person their senior year to talk about career counseling where their relationship might already have been established with their, within guidance, right? Because at high school, there's a real difference between guidance counselors and school counselors, where school counselors really focus on um a lot of mental health issues, or guidance counselors take over more of the college and career readiness. And I, I think, I wonder about kind of fleshing that out before anything's rolled out because I, I think that might be somewhat confusing for kids who never set foot into a CTE center.
Yeah, so I want to clear, those are great questions. So I want to clarify, so I did not at all say that suddenly the CTE staff would be doing career development with each individual student. What I said is that we're charging, again, that local context of LEA, including the school board, the, and the SU, if it, if it makes sense, um, board with the um respective CTE center to develop a career plan and a process for that. So it's really left up to the local level, like how that actually is implemented. So the idea, though, is to actually ensure that students all have um some access to career development. How that looks is not being specified by us because I think that you are exactly right, like in some places that might not work at all. Can you remind me what the first part of the piece you said was? Oh, yeah, yeah, so you're right, I got it, I, I reminded myself. So, you know, I would say up in um the Northeast Kingdom, there is a lot of great um connection going on between um middle school students and um the CTE centers. And, and that's happening in other places as well, but it is certainly not robust and, and systematic across the state. And so that's really what we're trying to do. We're trying to actually leverage some of the best practices, as you noted, that we've seen, and make sure that it's happening everywhere. So I just want to clarify that um because I think it's, that's really what our job is as the agency as well, is to really have a sense of like really great, very strong practice, and then um do our best to ensure that all kids get access to, to similar equitable opportunities. And that's not happening right now across the state. Mohammed, I had, I had, I had a couple of others, but I'm gonna take up all my time on CTE, I think. So um, maybe I'll just do a quick update or two on the others, and then I guess people follow up with questions if I, if folks have them for me.
Um, thank you, I applaud uh really this initiative. I just wanted to add that um, just like Jenna mentioned, at Williski, for example, we have a position, a specific position that works well in this initiative, and we named it Flexible Pathways and Work-Based Learning Coordinator. So this individual is in our school, working with any student who expresses interest in not going to college, but um through a career rather than going to college. And this individual um, I mean, um, host fairs, invite businesses, invite CTE, BTC folks to come in, to expose our students uh to different careers. Um, I, I'm just mentioning this just to say, um, I find it very helpful for each school that can uh afford to have such individual in their um um school or SU or SD um to be the coordinator with this CTE. So I just wanted to add that, and thank you for the update.
Kim? And I see Tammy also has her hand raised.
Yeah, Tammy can go first if she wants, I have a follow-up question, but um, Tammy, go first, I have already spoken.
My question, my question sends us in a different direction, though, it's not about CTE, so.
Okay, then I will.
I can foreshadow my question, I, I'd like to hear a little bit more about um the tuition with federal Title I funds in the state and what recently happened with the federal government.
Sure.
So I do have a quick follow-up to this. I thought that it was required for any student pursuing dual enrollment um to have a PLP and that students at independent schools are eligible to participate in dual enrollment.
Yes, if they do, if they, yes, if they do dual enrollment or early college, but that's the, you know, that doesn't mean they all have a PLP. So yes, before they can actually enroll in dual enrollment or early college, they have to have a PLP, but that doesn't mean all students who are publicly tuitioned in private institutions have a PLP. Those that actually engage in dual enrollment or early college, yes, you're correct, they do.
Yeah, and so too, I guess maybe that's a parking spot for us to think about how we might help inform legislation because it seems a little bit backwards to build a PLP after deciding you want dual enrollment or flexible pathways because um the whole point is that through your personalized learning plan, you may identify opportunities to achieve that plan versus decide you want to go to dual enrollment college and then build your plan back into it. So there might be a better practice that would encourage that sort of thoughtful reflection in a PLP format for all students that are publicly funded, who may eventually avail themselves of things such as dual enrollment. So it's a little bit of a backwards process.
And I'm not saying that they don't, they might have PLPs, they're just not required to, is what I'm saying. So everything.
I guess what I'm saying is if they're gonna be eligible to receive that dual enrollment funding while at a, an independent school, there might be good reason to consider suggesting informing legislation in a way that makes that part of a process, so.
Yeah, anyway, I, I mean, it would have to take legislative change. So everything we do follows and aligns very closely with what the charge is from Act Seventy Seven. And so these are good points, but we have to follow the law, so. Um, Tammy, yes.
Let me just interrupt here because Jenna just texted students in independent schools can participate in dual enrollment without PLPs.
That's not how our process um at the agency works, so we should talk about that, Jenna.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that um when the sending schools, either private or um public, they're signing on to be part of dual enrollment in early college um so that they're supposed to have a PLP. So let's, let's talk more about that.
Yeah, and I think I see even like guidance on home student, that's what sort of caused my pause in thinking is there's guidance on home schooled folks, if they want to avail themselves, they need to have a PLP. So I, and I, I was looking a little more closely at Seventy Seven. So uh, it seems to have sort of evolved to articulate if you want access to these pathways, there has to be a PLP articulating that. And I would say implementation across the state, I'm sure, is variable, as is always the case, in how this goes in schools and how robust and authentic the process is. But um, I, I saw those guidance documents, and um, so anyway, I would agree with you, Heather, on that, that the expectation would be if you're availing yourselves of those opportunities, it is because it is aligned with a PLP that's required. So anyway, thanks enough on that.
But yes, you're right, like the, the school personnel are who basically affirm that. So we don't have the capacity to, to go and say like, where is your PLP? We're just assuming that, you know, when they say that the kid has a PLP, that they do. Because they do have to sign off, um, the school counselor has to sign off. Typically, the school counselor, it could be the principal as well. Um, so this is a good conversation because I think um what it means to me is we might need a little bit of a reset in terms of that process to make sure that it's happening equivalently everywhere. So good to, good to hear. Um, Tammy, yes, um, it's kind of funny because to me, um, because we only meet monthly, like that was, you know, two weeks ago, like a flash fire. And so I apologize um that um it has been resolved, and so that's, that's the, the good like news. But let me talk a little bit about what it is, but that's why it's not even kind of on my mind, which is really unfair to the board. It's because like, oh, okay, that's done, we're on to like next fires, I just want to clarify. Um, so we, I learned in June, um, on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, that um we were uh significantly late in terms of getting our twenty twenty-two uh performance data up um into our report card. And so um I had not, as deputy, I had not been directly involved in this work. Um, it was not part of my portfolio as a deputy. Um, the data division did not report to me, the assessment division did not report to me. So as soon as I found out um from US Ed, um, you know, we mobilized very quickly at the agency, got everyone together and said, what is going on? And it turned out that we had had, um, we needed a contract amendment to, with Batel for Kids, who is the organization that actually builds the mechanics, if you will, of um our state report card. And so my understanding is that there had been um some confusion around funding source, that kind of stuff. And so it had just been delayed, which was a big part of the problem. So uh, I got that jumpstarted, um, and we moved quickly um to get um the twenty twenty-two data um back up to speed. More, it's a very technical, but more of the technical issue, so you understand, is that this all happened, um, the reason we were delayed as well was because, and the reason we needed the amendment was because, so in our ESA approved, in our federally approved ESA plan, um, uh, the bulk of our like comprehensive identifications would be um either three-year or year-to-year um different scores or, you know, looking at change. Well, in COVID, um, we didn't collect data in twenty twenty, and then our, our COVID amendment actually, we were approved to not use twenty twenty-one data. So uh, wha- what we were, what we needed to do and why this was really critical and why we needed the amendment is to actually have new code written, built, and deployed that would actually compare twenty nineteen data to twenty twenty-two data. So um, you know, I still, I, I will, you know, I still, um, it, I, I will express on behalf of like our state education system, including our LEAs, it's very frustrating to me how much of a stranglehold IT projects can have because to me, it's kind of like, what's the big deal? Like, get into the code, change the year, and off we're running. But it's not that simple, I guess. So we needed to do work with uh Batel for Kids, we needed to align work with um our Agency of Digital Services because it is a state platform, and then our assessment and um education quality team. So we did all that, we put up our twenty twenty-two data, we did our um, our identifications for comprehensive supports, which is the bulk of title funding, Title I funding. That's the stu, the, you know, you can think of it as like the bottom five percent, which is, you know, not really the way we like to think about it, but that's that identification. And um then, um, and we were working very closely with US Ed. Um, Adam Shaw, the undersecretary, um, was talking with us, talking with me, texting, like we were working really um closely with them for several months. But in the, in the process of that, um, we realized there was another issue, which was um identifying um schools for um what are called TSI and ATSI, which are um targeted um supports for intervention and then additional targeted supports for intervention. And those have to do, um, they're really important, and they have to do with gaps between historically marginalized students and then nonhistorically marginalized students. So an honest, a true honest mistake had been made. So when um we, the AOE, got approval from our, our COVID plan, so there was an amendment that was um to the state plan that was specifically to COVID, um, changes that needed to be made, we made an assumption um when that was approved because we, we weren't, we got approved to not use accountability for twenty twenty-one data, which we'd promised to the field, and the reason is because that data was still kind of wonky, right? Um, students were, we didn't have the participation rates that we typically would. Um, for some districts, you know, they still were dealing very um heavily with like absences, and you know, it was just a, it was a, it was a, it didn't seem like a smart idea for us to be using twenty twenty-one data. Our TSI, I know this is really technical, so please bear with me. Um, our TSI and then our ATSI, which is um a subset of TSI, are predicated in our approved federal plan on two-year um differences, so every two years. So in this case, it would have been twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. Um, we didn't have twenty, we, we weren't using twenty twenty-one. So we actually thought, okay, well then we're gonna have to wait till twenty twenty-three because we have twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three data to do our uh TSI and our ATSI. So we were wrong in that, and the um US Ed came back and said, no, 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 that's not what we agreed to. Like you, you, you should have put in some kind of change um into your amendment to address that. But we hadn't, and so what the upshot was is that if we had made, um, if we had made those um TSI and ATSI designations, we either would have been inconsistent with federal ESA or we would have been inconsistent with our state plan, our approved state plan. So what eventually happened with, it took us a lot, many, many weeks to kind of figure this all out together. And what eventually happened is US Ed, Adam Shaw said, all right, clearly, like, this is not gonna be solvable because of this dichotomy, you're either out of compliance with federal law for this year or you're out of compliance with your um ESA state plan. So we're gonna fine you and like, you know, do this, and then we're moving on to twenty twenty-three. So that's in an upshot, in the, you know, that's the upshot of what's happened. Um, I want to clarify, so some of the media said that the federal government was um withholding um funds. That's not the case. So what it means is the state agency um will not have access to those funds, and those funds will instead go out to the field. So they will be given to LEAs, um, more, um, they'll have a bit more. Um, we'll, we'll just use the same formula we use, um, it's a hundred thousand dollars, and so they will have added um amounts to their um, their grants.
Those fed, those federal funds pay for positions in the agency, right? So the agency respond, so what does that mean? I mean, AOE is essentially a federal agency, right? Like most of the positions.
Yeah.
So you just basically lost a hundred thousand dollars that pays for one or more positions that provide services, particu, you know, support and services as well as accountability and monitoring. That's primarily targeted at our districts and our LEAs that serve the most, the largest proportions of marginalized students. So what, what's the plan? Where's the money gonna come to keep those positions to continue providing that support to those LEAs and those students?
Yeah, so we're, we're finding those funds, and we don't have that just um figured out yet. We haven't actually um experienced the fine yet, but we're confident that we'll be able to figure out just given some vacancy savings and some other things that we've had that we'll be able to cover it because it is just this one year. So at this point, we're not, I'm not planning on any RIF or anything like that, so um, you know.
Yeah, so, but it does mean that other vacancies that need to get filled for other things aren't gonna get done, correct?
No, it will be for previous vacancies. For instance, we had a vacancy for a very long time, almost ten months, um, in the deputy position, which is gen-funded, so that's what I'm talking about, like, that's.
Okay, so we, you're just gonna gen-fund the position, you're gonna pull the funds out of the general fund for the year until your Title I dollars come back?
We don't know, I don't have the details on that, you're, we're working that out um because it might be pulling together some other federal funds that can be used to offset this. We're just really trying to figure that out. So I'm happy to come back with an update once we actually have the um, you know, once we have the actual plan in place and the, you know, where the actual funds are coming from. But what I can say is, you know, I've been working very closely with the governor's office, like, we're not, you know, this will be covered, um, we're gonna figure that out, so. Um, and I'm not trying to undersell the severity of the issue, it's, it's a big deal.
No, I didn't take it that way, I was just trying to figure out. Oh, I didn't take it that way. I was just trying to figure out, especially with, you know, the big numbers that are being batted around for budget crisis in the state, you know, this is a hundred thousand dollars matters, right? And so just trying to figure out, like, especially given the, the larger budget context, how, how those dollars get backfilled. I think the state board's primary interest would be in making sure that the agency is able to continue doing its important work, right? And implementing the regulations and things along those lines. And to the extent that you are now down a person, that raises some concerns.
Um, we're not down a person. We're continuing to, again, we're not doing any RIFs. Um, we, I feel confident um in speaking with our, our fiscal team, our CFO and our deputy CFO, that we will be able to cover this. Um, again, um, you know, in any year, we have vacancy savings that are, that are built into our budget and they're vacancy savings from the previous months that then are rolling over. Um, the other thing I would note, though, is that the, the big um funding problem right now has nothing to do with the agency. It's the ed fund and we don't, the ed fund does not cover the agency.
Yeah, no, I, I'm quite aware. I'm quite aware. It's just money.
So.
There's not a lot of money floating around right now to, to be give, to be, to, there's not, just not a lot of money floating around. So. But thank you for the update. That's really helpful.
Yeah. And um, the thing I would say is that, so we are, we actually finished our obligations in that letter around the twenty twenty three data like a week early. So we're all good. Like moving forward. And now we're back to the way the um report card was always set up. So it was really this weird one time thing we had to do to make the calculations because of the way COVID data were collected. Um, so now, you know, we don't, we don't anticipate any future problems. Um, because we're, we've never been in trouble for this um before. And so um we're now back to kind of our regular situation. Um, but um, you know, it, it has been challenging and trying um on our team. Frankly, on me and an interim role. I mean, it's, it's been a lot of work. But I'm really happy that we worked very closely with US Ed, which if you read the very bottom of the letter, they talk about that. Uh, and they have to do what they have to do, right? Like, we knew that. We knew that this letter was going to be exactly the way it was. It's the same thing we would have to do, even if we were working very closely, for instance, with an LEA that had gotten off track with something they're monitored on. We have to actually document that and, you know, so.
The way, it's the way the process works. So thanks for the update, Heather.
Yeah. So really quick, because I am way over time, I know, and I don't want to mess up our agenda um anymore. Um, we have, um, we're working um on largely at this point, um Senate Ed and on, we actually submitted a literacy package and I'm very happy. It might, it might be helpful. Um, I'm happy to share those with um the board, sort of like what the um administration put forth as packages. Um, I wasn't able to do that earlier because they were under executive privilege. But now that they um have been worked on, um, I'm happy to do that if that would be helpful. Um, so there's, um, and now we're working, um, I don't know exactly why, but you, Senate Education decided to put many of our uh proposed uh policy changes with respect to literacy in addition to some of the work that its members wanted to do into a series of different, um, there's like three different literacy bills. I'm not entirely sure why. I think the idea, though, is that they're all gonna come into one before it gets passed. But it's a, it's been a little bit um confusing to kind of keep track of them all. But that's just the way they kind of make the sausage, if you will. Um, so um, just high level, these are um, the high points for these are, are requi- really digging into instructional practice and teaching and making sure that all teachers have a solid understanding. And when I say all, I mean, all educators have a solid understanding. Even, you know, if you're a phys ed teacher or a health teacher, um, even if you are a physics teacher, um, have an understanding of how students actually learn to read. And um, it's really, you know, other states have really adopted this and seen great progress. And as you might know, like, we have kind of stagnated over the past several years in terms of our statewide performance, um, in terms of how we track nationally in both literacy and math. Um, and so it's really aimed to get, to get at that. Um, and so we developed using um some state uh COVID dollars. We developed a set of um free to use modules that really walk uh teachers, educators through the five pillars of the science of reading. So phonemic awareness, um, I think it's um phoneme development, that might be the wrong phrase, um fluency, comprehension, and there's always another one that I forget. There are five. Um, and so it really, you know, we worked um and contracted with a vendor to really set up these modules so that all teachers could have access to that. Now we're actually working on more of a mandatory approach to kind of say, hey, we've got these for free. You have two years to actually finish these. Um, there is some conversation going on right now about um the extent to which um licensed teachers in independent schools would also be required to um do this. Um, because it's really linked to uh relicensor um in terms of how we're actually gonna implement this. Um, we're also in this bill taking a, a deeper look at um teacher preparation programs in the state. So there have been a couple of, one national, and then we had a Vermont um report that came out showing that uh we really, you know, at least with a syllabus review, and there are some questions about whether that's the best approach, but that there um are some potential gaps um in terms of what our teacher preparation programs are offering to um teachers so that, um, you know, many of our partners in the field would say that when they actually receive teachers um from our teacher prep programs, they're not ready. They still need to be, they still need to, to have training on literacy instruction and things like that. And so we're trying to really address that gap by using our ROPA um approval process to make sure um that we have a tighter hand on like, what is it about at least literacy instruction to start that is, that is actually happening? Um, you know, are you ensuring that um the science of reading is, you know, front and center? Jenna.
Thanks. So are you seeing the science of reading as a curric- like a state adopted curriculum or professional development that would enhance the current programs, the variety of current programs and approaches that are in our schools?
Yeah. We're not talking, and you know, science of reading, I probably should say evidence-based reading instruction, because science of reading, I think, um, I'm, science of reading might be an actual, you know, copyright. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about um a variety, I mean, we're talking about ensuring that through a variety of methods, one of which we think is smart because it's free for all educators, which is the set of modules that we've invested in as the state, that they all get access to what we know from decades of research is really critical for how students learn to read. Um, so this is the five pillars that I was talking about. So there are other ways that um a licensed teacher or a new teacher could show that they have had you know, the equivalent of completing these modules, particularly if they are a, a teacher who specialized in reading development, for instance. Um, you know, they could have had a much more, a much more robust experience. Um, but again, we're trying to actually ensure that a wider net of educators has a, a basic understanding of how kids learn to read. Because um we know, we also have far too many kids that make it through, you know, several grades and then um we find out that they have um some challenges with reading. And so the idea is that if all teachers have a good understanding of, of what this looks like, that they'll, you know, they'll, like, you could have a health teacher that says, hey, my student, um Juan is really having a hard time reading um the assignments that we're going through, what's going on here. And as I said, other states have deployed this methodology with some great success. Jenna.
Just as a follow-up question. Um, at, before the agency made a determination on, on these practices and adopting the pillars from the science reading, was there work done with curriculum coordinators and literacy specialists, coaches statewide in developing this?
I believe so. I believe they were consulted because the team that does this work in flexible pathways has really robust connections with VIKLA. Um, but it went through, you know, we had to actually procure, so we had to go through procurement. Um, so, and I can get that information to you. Um, yeah. Um, we also have um a piece, a bill that um we're just starting to get um testimony requests on for really encoding um some components of remote learning. Um, so we know that as a result of the pandemic, more students were able to engage in online learning um because of the uh emergency, the state of emergency. So um I don't know if you recall, but Secretary French at the time was able to, you know, there were a lot of regulations that were relaxed as a result of that. So it allowed more um districts to deploy um remote learning and options for students. Largely because um we all, you know, we were all needing something that was not at school. We were, we were trying to really get at, like, how do we actually continue this continuity of learning um for students um using online methodology because we can't have them safely at school. What we also learned, though, is that for some students, that was a really robust learning paradigm for them. And they actually really excelled and really loved that. And so um this bill is um attempting to kind of fix some of our um existing um title sixteen um and then um associated implementation practices that we have to actually make sure that we can maintain that level of flexibility that we had during COVID. Um, for the details, I'm happy to follow up with that. Um, just, and I, I don't have the bill numbers. We can give that to you, too. There are so many bill numbers that I cannot keep them all straight. So I have to like, actually, to keep my brain going, I have to say, not the bill number, like, what is the topic? And I'm constantly doing that with Maureen and Suzanne, who know. And I'm like this, you know, I don't have time to go look up this bill number. Like, what is it? Just what is the snippet of the topic? Mohammed.
Uh, I just want to get back to the online learning uh platform. I mean, flexibility is always great. Um, a student, a teacher, staff can fall sick but can still um be willing to do work at home if we can allow them to do so. Um, with that being said, I've run into multiple situations um working in the field. Uh, I'm learning some students are missing a key component around um utilizing um computers, this platform, uh to actually even find their work. So I'm just encouraging whatsoever is coming that is new to put um the instruction of the uh computer system, the platform itself, to be explicit to students around how to navigate it, how to find what you're looking for. Let's say you have an assignment. Some students don't even, well, I'm not gonna say across the state, but in some situations, students even struggle to find or to locate their as- uh assignments. So I, I'm just bringing this up because you're mentioning about the uh online platform. I find that it's really, really important to be uh, to come up first. Yeah.
Well, and one of the things I think that happened in COVID was um, we did have, we supported VTVLC, which um has a lot of um real strength in our state because it uses Vermont licensed teachers um to actually provide um the coursework. Um, but for a variety of reasons, other, you know, some districts chose not to go with VTVLC. So I know it for my own daughter's um case. Um, she was actually taking some courses through, of all things, like Wash, Shega, Wa- Wachana, like Illin- um Illinois, I think. Like, and, and so she had hooked into that system and there were others, too. So, and that was during COVID. So I think you're right on in terms of Mohammed. Like, there were different systems that students had to navigate and it was really hard because they didn't speak to each other. They were kind of like, so she was doing that, just in my daughter's instance, she was doing that for her French class because of where, where she was and what would, you know, her level of French. And then it, her level was not offered by VTVLC. And so her school decided, okay, well, we're gonna hook up for a small number of students with this other district in Illinois. Um, and then there were others that were using um like a, a system out of Florida. Like, there were, there were just, um, and part of it is that we just didn't have the capacity at the state level because it was the COVID um emergency to kind of streamline that and say like, okay, how do we actually make this easier and streamlined so that you can do and address? And there is more systematicity around the issues, like here is what the login looks like. So that's exactly what we're trying to do. Mohammed.
And with that being said, there is um a great conference happening in April around AI. Um, when I find it before the end of the minute, uh, before the end of this meeting, I'm gonna attach it to this um chat link. So everyone has, has it. I really encourage anyone talking about online platform learning and what's coming up new with AI, it's scary and plagiarism with students doing work from home and what they submit and what to submit, what not to submit, what to copy, what not to copy, those kind of stuff. So I'm gonna try to find that out and attach it here at the chat. So it's at everyone's hands here. And thank you again for sharing.
Jennifer.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, um, you know, with the whole online learning, remote learning. Um, I think COVID was such an awful time for so many people, but you know, one of the things that sort of kept me sane was to look for like the good that came out of it. And I would say that the remote learning is one of those things because, you know, certainly, you know, just on my own experience, two of my kids hated it, hated it, hated it. But one of my kids, like, was living her best life. I mean, like, it really spoke to, you know, the way she learns, the way she thinks. And it was really, you know, a godsend for her. So I think, you know, prior to COVID, I don't even think that that was contemplated, that that might be a good solution for some students. And so um I just wanted to share that because I'm, I, I like this sort of increased flexibility that's coming out of, you know, something that we all went through together. Um, and then I was also just gonna wrap up, um, unless there are other questions because I know that we are kind of over time and I want you to have time to do the other things that you need to be doing. But I think it would be helpful if you could send that literacy package um to board members or maybe have it um linked to the meeting minutes, um, if you felt that was appropriate.
Absolutely. Um, the last update um I was going to give was just kind of a, a, a brief update on where we are with the ed fund, but it sounds like folks um might already kind of know that. There is um H eight fifty um approaching a landing. From what I understand, it's made it out of the House. It's now with, with Senate. Um, that would do a variety of things and um it would remove the Act one twenty seven um cap on tax. Um, it would ex- it would give the possibility of extending um the um warned meeting um for the school budget at the local level, um, among other things. I think what I will say is um it's incredibly, incredibly stressful and hard for our districts at the leadership level and our boards right now. And you already know that because we've already talked about it. But um, we're trying our very best to um, you know, just provide the support we can to them. Um, you know, just recognizing that they're under incredible stress. Um, and it's a real tough situation. It's, it's a perfect storm of um factors that have gone into the, the crisis that we're facing right now um in terms of uh the potential impact on taxpayers. Um, so just wanted to share that.
Thank you. I think what I'd like to do um that, you know, takes us through Agenda Item E. I know we have um Ruth Durkey scheduled at ten oh five. Um, so what I would like to propose, just so that we don't hold her up, is if we can do the delegation of School Day waiver authority um agenda item, I'd like to do that and then maybe take a quick five-minute break, just in case board members need to step away. And then pick up with Ruth and after she's done, then we'll um move forward for um the Rule Series two thousand and twenty-two hundred updates and we'll put those after her presentation, if that is acceptable to everybody. Okay. So at this point, let's move on to item F, which, Heather, is that also you? Oh, you're muted.
It is me and I believe Simmons is also here, Emily Simmons. Um, so this is um a request to continue our practice um that we have had in the last um several years of the state board granting the secretary with um the authority to um approve waivers for um schools. the authority to um approve waivers for um school attendance days, um, the number of days. And I will let Simmons speak a little bit more to that. We have actually developed a very good system um and um that I think has achieved equity in terms of how those decisions are being made um across the state, which is a really nice, um, a really nice feature. The other thing I would say, just anecdotally, is having it systematized this way has actually, and I think Simmons might chuckle with me at this, but it's, you know, has, has actually uncovered that not all superintendents are aware, for instance, that you have to actually build five extra days into your calendar. And so some of that was kind of like, uh, yeah, this is a requirement, um, what's going on? And so we've, it's, it's allowed us to kind of like work on that. And I think bringing them all together um in sort of a robust way for, and again, the system um has a deadline by which all superintendents need to actually put these requests in. It allows us to kind of look at that all, um, as opposed to like one-offs here and there, which I know um Chair Samuelson has also seen some of those coming in. Um, so yeah, I, um, Simmons, do you want to further embellish um correct anything that I said, which I don't think is needed?
There's another element to this. I don't want to get lost. So our requested motion is in two parts. First, to authorize the Secretary to make the decision on waivers, but very importantly, to waive a State Board rule for this year that makes days prior to February first that are not instructional days eligible for waivers. Um, the trend that we're seeing is that due to facilities issues, you're going to see more of those closures at any point in the school year, whereas maybe ten or fifteen years ago, you would really only see snow days. Um, so that, that's our two-part request for authorization. And we submitted a green sheet, or what we used to call green sheets. They used to be on green paper, remember? Which has the two uh proposed actions.
Um, Emily, where is the green sheet? Because I did not see that come through.
Let me check your website.
I was just making, I was making some notes, but if you've got the actual language, that would be preferable.
It is Item F. I see it live on your website, which I don't have a copy of your packet in front of me.
Yeah, um. Okay, let me pull that up. I might have just missed printing it, just sorry. Do board members have any questions while I'm pulling up the um motion language? Um, Jenna.
Just a curious question, probably more for Heather. Um, do you track the days that schools are closed for non-weather related or like weather-related but impact on facilities? So like, you can track what buildings or what areas are impacted by different climate issues?
We do. So Jenna, interestingly, the statute is just any closure beyond the control of the school board. So people do speak about it as weather, but we don't treat it as weather for one reason and others. So yes, we track the number of days requested and the cause, just a short explanation for each. And so that's how I'm able to tell you, like, when I looked at it last year, I, I observed that there were a lot of facilities-based closures.
Thanks. Um, Kim, did I see? Yes, Kim, your hand is up.
Yeah, just, um, it's great to hear that there's a sort of systematized process, and I'm just wondering if that's something, just as an FYI, since we're sort of um sending this authority to you all and we're waiving our rule, just if you wanted to share, if you have it documented, what that um process is, that would be helpful in case we were to be asked. Thank you. That doesn't need to be before we take the vote, just if that can follow up your procedure process for handling so that we are informed. Thanks.
Yeah, I think we have a one-pager that kind of walks that out, right, Simmons?
I think it's a beautiful spreadsheet.
Yes, okay. All right. Um, so if we are ready for the motion, um, the first motion, I move that the State Board authorize the Secretary to, on its behalf, grant waivers for any unanticipated closures under sixteen VSA Section one zero seven one C in the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year.
So moved.
Um, okay. All right. Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. And the second motion is that the State Board waive application of State Board Rule twenty-three eleven point one for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. Moved by Kim. Looked at by Jenna. Um, any discussion?
Jennifer, could you read that one more time?
Yes. It is that the State Board waive application of State Board Rule twenty-three eleven point one for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Emily. Um, okay, so as discussed, um, how about if we take a quick five-minute break? We'll come back and pick up, um, we'll move on to the um CTE presentation by Ruth Durkey, and then when she's done, we'll circle back to the um EQS and twenty-two hundred updates. All right, I'll see you guys in a few minutes. I'm going to um jump back in, and um this is Agenda Item H, I believe, um, Career Technical Education Presentation by Ruth Durkey, the State Director of CTE. So Ruth, welcome, and uh thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you so much. It's really nice to be with you. Um, just as a little introduction, I have worked in career technical education since nineteen ninety-nine, which is when I first met Lyle Jackson, I believe, who was also starting in career and technical education at about the same time. I worked first at what was then the Vermont Department of Education and left in two thousand and four to work for fifteen years in regional technical centers as an administrator. And then I did some consulting, and then I landed here back at the Agency of Education um as the State Director of Career Tech Ed. But Career Tech Ed has been central to my career for a long time. So I prepared some slides for you this morning, and I'm going to share my screen and show them, and you are welcome to ask questions as I present, but I won't be able to see your hand raised. So Lyle and Jennifer graciously offered to help me make sure I don't miss you if you have a question to ask. So let me. Okay. My computer tells me it's thinking about it. There we go. Um, I just wanted to give you a little overview of Career Tech Ed in Vermont, and then we'll have plenty of time to talk about anything you most want to know about or learn more about. Um, but in Vermont, we offer career technical education through state-approved career technical education programs, and they're offered at spit, at seventeen regional CTE centers, and State Board Rule defines regions for each of those CTE centers. And then Canaan Memorial High School offers state-approved career technical education programs due to its geographical isolation. And Mississippi Valley Union High School provides agriculture programs only, and that's based on some agreement that goes back to long before I ever started working in Career Tech Ed. And um I haven't been able to find anything written anywhere about, tells us how, where that came from, but it's been that way in Vermont for a very long time. Of those seventeen regional technical centers, eleven of them are um part of an LEA, so they operate under the governance board of their school district in which they are located. Then four are regional technical center school districts, so they have their own governance structure, and they have a superintendent CTE director, and they have a governance board separate from the the board of the high school they're in close proximity to. And then we have two independent or private schools that provide public career technical education, Linden Institute and St. Johnsbury Academy. So in my day-to-day work, I think of that as four, we have seventeen regional technical centers plus two comprehensive high schools providing some CTE programs, working under basically four different governance models. So that just gives you a background to understand perhaps some of what the APA Consulting Report was getting at in terms of the complexity of Vermont's current CTE governance system. Priority and enrollment for CTE programs of study is given to eleventh and twelfth-grade students under State Board Rule, and tenth-grade students, the rules provide that tenth-grade students are eligible to enroll in CTE programs of study if their high school agrees, if space is available, they meet the admissions criteria, and they have the maturity to successfully participate. Um, and that really goes to uh the fact that by focusing our programming on eleventh and twelfth-grade students, some of our curriculum design and credentials and dual enrollment credits that students have the opportunity to earn um need to, students need to show their readiness to, to take full advantage of those. CTE centers provide full-day programs, um, which means they have programming um for at least two forty, two hundred and forty minutes per day for a full school year, or half-day programs that have to be at least a hundred and twenty minutes per day, and they run for two full school years. So um, some sometimes people ask me how many centers we have, they're full-day and half-day. And basically, we have five centers that are completely full-day, but they even operate in different schedules and ways of what they provide. And then we have some centers that are mostly half-day, but provide some programs as full-day options, and then we have other centers that are truly just half-day. So again, the complexity of how we deliver career technical education in Vermont. Um, and then we also have pre-technical education programs, and State Board Rule defines two different kinds of pre-tech programs. The first are called pre-tech exploratory programs, and they're available to ninth and tenth-grade students at ten CTE centers. And these programs meet for between a hundred and twenty and two hundred and forty minutes per day, and they combine career exploration with rigorous and integrated academic content. And they, over the past um two years, as we've done our upgrade of CTE program proficiencies, we've ensured that they align to CCV's Introduction to College and Careers, and we've done a lot of professional development work with the teachers in that program to share um curriculum and teaching um uh resources to strengthen that alignment with CCV's Introduction to College and Careers. And then we have pre-tech foundations courses, and they're typically forty to sixty minutes in length and often run for just one semester, and they're offered at some, but not all, CTE centers. And they are very much the introductory-level courses designed to help students decide if they are interested in going on to more study in a particular um CTE program area. I think if we go back to just how that plays out in Vermont, typically, in many of our centers, those programs may only be available to the closest or the attached high school, or to some high schools in the region, and not equally to all students in the region. So um that looks different in different regions of the state, and some CTE centers do not offer any pre-tech foundations courses and only offer CTE programs and pre-tech exploratory programs. So again, just differences from region to region in our current delivery of career technical education in Vermont. And our programs are diverse and deep. Um, so I've given you just a list of what those programs are, and they fall into a variety of categories. So um, and some centers have, almost every center has an automotive technology program, whereas only Burlington has an aviation maintenance program, and only Wyndham Regional Career Center has an aviation program that's more based on the science of flight and all the careers that go with understanding the science of flight. We have um construction trades programs in all of our CTE, on most of our CTE centers, not all. And some centers also then have additional opportunities for students in electrical technology, plumbing, and/or HVAC. Our centers um across the board do offer health sciences programs, and some also offer um, actually, we're, we have two centers currently that are offering dental assisting, but as of next year, that will drop to one, as um Randolph is not, is going to not have a dental assisting program next year. We have diversified agriculture, natural resources, forestry, and heavy equipment operation programs. We have engineering and advanced manufacturing programs, and often those um combined principles of both engineering and advanced manufacturing. We have information technology and cybersecurity programs, human services programs, early child education preparation programs, and teacher education preparation programs, cosmetology, business, digital and visual arts, culinary arts, and welding and metal fabrication. So we have a real range of programs. And most CTE centers offer between ten and fourteen of these different program options. That's just a general estimate. It varies from region to region. During the two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year, five thousand two hundred and sixty-two students participated in CTE. And of those, three thousand and sixteen were program concentrators. So a concentrator is a student who enrolls in that program that's at least a hundred and twenty to two hundred and forty minutes a day, and they complete a full school year in that. And that's a federally defined term under our Perkins Five legislation that provides um federal funding for career technical education in Vermont. So we had three thousand and sixteen students who really did that in-depth time in career technical education. And then the remaining students were primarily students who were taking advantage of one of those pre-tech opportunities that we talked about earlier. Our CTE graduation rate is very high, so ninety, and it historically has been in the whole time I've worked in career technical education. It dipped just slightly during the pandemic, but it has since rebounded, so that in um two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-six point seven seven percent of CTE concentrators graduated within four years of starting high school. And sixteen point one nine percent of our CTE concentrators are preparing for fields that are non-traditional for their gender. And that's defined by federal law as a career field where less than twenty-five percent of the workforce is male or is female. So sixteen point nineteen percent of our students are preparing for fields where they've historically been underrepresented. Heather.
Hey, you saw me. It worked.
I did. It worked.
Is that up?
It is.
Yeah, because the last time I think I was talking about this and presenting on it, it was a lot lower than that. So that's fantastic. Can you talk a little bit about that?
I can. When I started at the agency, it hovered around eleven point nine percent. And in a moment, I have a slide, Heather, that gets to some of our CTE equity learning we've, we've done, done over the past couple of years. And I'd like, I can't, I can't say definitively that that has led to this, but I do think we have put significant time, resource, and energy into helping our CTE centers cultivate their institutional capacity to lead on this issue, and I think we're starting to see a return on that work. So thank you.
We call that a plausible hypothesis, Ruth, that they're connected.
And we'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to that. But yes, I think we've been deliberate in this area, and it's nice to see that with our deliberate intentions, we're starting to see those numbers shift. Because they were, they were stagnant for a long time. I think what I had seen before I started in this role was Vermont hovered between eleven and twelve percent for many, many years. Jennifer.
So before you go on to the next slide, um, I was really impressed with the ninety-six point seventy-seven percent um graduation rate. Um, that's, that's phenomenal. Do you have the data, or maybe does the agency have the dat- data for, you know, what the, you know, average graduation rate is in Vermont by comparison?
I have amazing colleagues on our data team who could find that for us.
I don't think it's this high. Um, I was just.
No, they talk.
It's about eighty-eight percent, depending on the year. And it's gone down, sorry, Ruth, it's gone down a little bit um because of COVID. Um, so our two thousand and twenty-three might be up again um from that eighty-eight percent, but that's what I recall seeing um as we went through COVID. But we can get that to you, Ruth is exactly right. Sorry.
Yeah. I just know that my data colleagues are always pleased with how great the CTE data is and talk about that, the consistently seeing that high graduation rate for our CTE concentrators. Um, we have a lot of federal data that we're required to collect and report, and it's really great because it highlights our student outcomes. So Perkins Five really places a tremendous amount of um emphasis on ensuring our CTE programs are rigorous and that our student outcomes are strong. And so there are program quality measures that come with Perkins Five, and these are sort of, these are the, those measures. So Perkins Five looks at the number of students who are leaving post-sec, leaving high- So Perkins Five looks at the number of students who are leaving post sec, leaving high school. Graduating from high school, having earned a post-secondary industry-recognized credential. And in a moment, I'll tell you what those, give you some examples of those, but I think the exciting thing is that fifty-eight point three one percent of our. Um high school students who graduated in June. Um did so um having left their career tech ed program, having earned one or more of these credentials. And to give you a sense of the credentials, they range tremendously. But for example, they include the emergency medical technician's credentials, so EMTs. We have students who leave as licensed cosmetologists. We have students who leave with their dental radiography and certified dental assistant credentials. Many students graduate with um earned American Welding Society credentials. Licensed nursing assistant credentials, certified medical assistant and phlebotomist. Um and in the, we have students who finish um the, and pass the exam for year one of a state-registered apprenticeship program in electrical or plumbing. And we have some students who do two years in a CTE program and not only finish and pass the year one exam, they pass the second year exam as well. And participate in work-based learning, um paid work-based learning that gives them hours toward their on-the-job requirements for those apprenticeships. In our transportation field, students earn a variety of automotive service excellence or ASE certifications. And many students also earn the Vermont State Inspection Certification. And then in the IT sector, students earn A-plus and Line-X um certifications. So we have a wide range of credentials. That students earn. And this is another area where we've seen tremendous growth. We were hovering at about twenty-two percent um. Under Perkins Four, which did not, the same emphasis on earned post-secondary credentials. And so twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one was the first school year where we really had this program quality measure. And we've seen measurable growth in each year. So we've gone up to fifty-eight point three one percent. Um and we've really done a lot of very specific teacher professional development work. Because teachers have the capacity and the skill to do it, but we brought them together in ways to help share best practice and um and really help. Dedicate resources to to getting to these outcomes. And so I think teachers and CTE directors. And the agency are all feeling great pride in the growth we've made in this area. And just to give you an example. This is a range, but at our highest end, one center, Central Vermont Career Center. Had eighty-six percent of their students who graduated in June graduate with one of these credentials. Similarly, thirty-nine point eight eight percent of our students earn college credits in their CTE program or center. And so Perkins really looks at what's the right combination of college credits. And post-secondary credentials to ensure that students who participate in CTE in high school are leaving high school. With an advantage they would not have had in terms of acceleration on a career pathway or readiness for college. So um thirty-nine point eight eight percent of students earn college credits. And that also is up, we, our baseline again. As when Perkins Five first went into law, was also in that tw- low twenty percent range. So. Similar to the post-secondary credentials and we've made that grow. And I say that they earn those credits in their CTE program or at their center because many. Of the dual enrollment courses students take in CTE are offered specifically in their program and aligned to their program content. And sometimes go back and align to that industry-recognized credential. So for example, our students who are earning EMT certification. Are also earning college credits at the same time in emergency med- medical technician fields. Um and then others earn credit for foundational college-level courses that. Um they take center-wide. So many of our CTE centers offer a college English or a college math or an introduction to psychology course. That students take across program areas. And Jennifer, did you have your hand raised?
Sorry, forgot to unmute. Um am I remembering, like, I know with the dual enrollment that, you know, typically high school students can get up to two college credits. During their, you know, high school years, but with CTEs, am I correct that students often graduate with more than two credits?
Yes. So that's a great question, Jennifer. Basically, we have Perkins funding to help off, to to help cover the costs of those dual enrollment courses offered in our CTE centers. We um provide. Funding to um both CCB and Vermont State University and then CTE centers also partner with other institutions. Um for example, I think we have a couple of centers who part with Norwich University. We have a few set, we have many centers who partner with New Hampshire Community College System because they offer courses that are not available. Um. Through our Vermont system, especially in hospitality and culinary arts, but in other areas as well. And basically, that means that students can take two college courses, up to two college courses per semester. Sometimes there is an opportunity to take up to three college courses per semester with a waiver through. To make sure that that's not too heavy a course load. Um and so they're earning, um we have students that, for example, at Burlington Technical Center in their Health Sciences Academy. Who can earn up to seventeen college credits in their two years in career tech ed, half-day. Students at Green Mountain Technology and Career Center in their um creative media program. Often graduate with twelve college credits that they earn in one to two school years. So yes, really great stuff. And that still leaves students their two vouchers for dual enrollment to use through their high school or in the summer or in other ways. So that they can also add those college credit opportunities.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Forty-four point four nine percent participated in work-based learning and that includes unpaid career um work experience. And as an example of what that might be, many of our health sciences students, for example, in earning a credential, do clinical rotations. And provide direct patient care and that those hours would count as career work experience. And many participate in what's been long-called paid cooperative employment, which we can also think of as a paid internship. So as we go back to our electrical and plumbing students who we're talking about, many of them complete their first year in their CTE program. And then do their second year um working with an electrical or plumbing contractor, working toward hours toward apprenticeship and that time is paid. They do have um related instruction and time at their CTE center each week as well. And then ninety-six point three six percent of students who graduated in June. Were enrolled in college, pursuing advanced training, employed or in the military when we have, our centers are required to do a follow-up survey between October and November of each. Fall after students graduate. And the thing that interests me that's another shift is that in the past, we had more students going on to um. Ca- um employment, but we're at the point where it's very um similar. So at, in June twenty twenty-three, when we did that follow-up. Um. In the fall of twenty twenty-three, forty-six percent of our students who graduated from CTE were enrolled in college. Forty-four percent were employed. Seven percent were pursuing advanced training and in most cases, that means they were continuing on and registered apprenticeship. Or they were doing a shorter-term certification program. So for example, they might be doing another certification. Um in the health sciences, they might be doing more welding certification or they might be um. Doing uh so welding, emergency medical kinds of things. Uh. And apprenticeship are the ones that most students then go on to do if they don't go on to a traditional associate or four-year degree program. And three, and just under three percent were in the military. So.
Quick comment and then a question, Ruth?
Okay.
Um there are Department of Labor grants available for internships. So what our organization here at Cedar. Uh for the last three years has written a grant with Stafford Technical Center that connects. Students with funding uh so that employers actually don't pay the salaries of. The students that are going out. So it's a great opportunity. That's through the Department of Labor and there's a grant opportunity open now, closing on the twenty-ninth of this month. For organizations that would like to help tech centers do that. Um and then a softball question. Um one of the things that always impressed me about the tech centers is that, and maybe it's changed, but back in the day when I was there. There were six-month and three-year follow-ups to find out where the students are. Does that continue and what are you finding?
So what I'm finding is there's still the, so the six-month follow-up is still. There and that's, I think, reflective in this data. And it's changed from six months to in the second quarter after high school graduation. So. That means that the requirement is to figure out where students are between September and December. Of the year they graduate. And we tend to do that follow-up. We start it by October fifteenth and we finish it by the end of November. Um the three-year follow-up requirement in federal law is no longer there. It disappeared. And so that is now a CTE center by CTE centerpiece. I think in the long run, it would help, be helpful as. We continue to think this through to think about what we want to collect as a state because I think we're losing the opportunity to highlight our students' success.
Thank you.
Did someone else have a hand raised?
Not right now.
Okay. One of the things I'm also proud about what we've been able to do and this started during the pandemic and has continued and has grown. Um and I'm sorry, I skipped ahead on my slide here, but we, the Agency of Education and the CTE Directors Association, which is called the BACTED. Um have been partnering to provide statewide professional development for CTE educators. And. We used to have teachers gather by program area for half-days and um. And Perkins Five really forces us to really think through how we make our professional learning for teachers. Um continually working toward major goals of the law and also. Um building upon what's happened in the past so that you don't do the same thing. Or similar things each time, but you're really building and looking at what professional learning is offered based on what your data tells you. Are areas of strength and areas where teachers can use more support. So those two-day collaborative meeting. There's a day held in October each year and a day held in May each year. And basically, to get all of our CTE programs into those, it turns out into five to six full days of professional learning that the CTE team attends. That teachers attend and that um periodically tech center directors attend. And those, um the feedback about those has been very positive. It's given a lot of time for teachers to do that work on credentials and college credits to share curricular resources and best practices. To bring together resources to collaboratively share best practices and to implement in centers. So what, and it gives a chance for. More seasoned teachers to um support and help grow our newer teachers. And those have been very well received. And they can bring in a variety of resources um to help them with that. And. What's also been developed is that the content for each day definitely varies by CTE program area. So that it's data-informed and teacher-informed. Teachers are surveyed for what they most need. And we review data and we have a wonderful consultant who then um. The Directors Association has contracted with to plan each of those days and she does a phenomenal job. She's a former CTE director herself. Um and they're excellent. Uh and then we have a CTE summer conference and we used to have a CTE summer conference long ago. And it stopped for many years and we restarted uh the summer conference in. Twenty twenty-three and it was attended by about two hundred CTE educators. And the dates have been set for August this year and it will be at J-Peak. And there are conference themes that include cultivating purpose, creating equitable schools, supporting student needs. Strengthening career pathways, building students' literacy and math skills and utilizing data in CTE. And those are the similar strands that we had at the conference last year and workshops all revolved around them. And the feedback about the conference, um the, the participant surveys were very positive and people felt that they got. Resources that were very relevant to helping them feel prepared to start the school year with new um capacity to do their work. Or new energy to bring to the job that they do. So that was really positive and we're looking forward to August twenty twenty-four. Then we also started the Equity Learning Cohorts. And one of the things that um. We were really focused on was the fact that that data hadn't changed, right? So our percentage of students preparing for non-traditional fields hadn't really changed. But also, our data certainly shows that we have gaps in opportunity and performance in career tech ed that mirror what national research would show. So Perkins allows us to dedicate a certain amount of funds per year. It actually requires us to dedicate funds. To work to improve the percentage of students um participating in non-traditional fields. And to support our students who are in what Perkins defines as special populations categories, but I think we would. Define as students who have been historically underrepresented in career technical education. Or in other ways, more marginalized in our education system. So those Equity Learning Cohorts, we have um, we have. We had. A group last year that included the CTE School Counseling Coordinators and twenty teachers. We, of those who started last year, we have thirty who are continuing this year. And then we started a second cohort of another twenty-two educators. So we have approximately. Fifty-five CTE educators who are participating, which is about ten percent of our CTE educator workforce. And they come together for a full day in the fall and a full day in the spring. We again have an outstanding facilitator who's leading that work. Um and I think it's always a testimony for the fact that when teachers are talking about opportunities to other teachers. One teacher in a fall tech meeting and encouraging people to apply for the Equity Learning Cohort because we do require teachers to apply. Um said not only would their ability to be, that they're, not only would they strengthen their own equity lens and their own professional practice. But that the best thing for this teacher had been watching the skill the facilitator for this. Learning brings to it because like all good educators, they're like, what can I learn just from how this other educator teaches me in ways that really make me excited and feel empowered? The other good thing about the learning cohorts has been that they have brought together people who would not otherwise have known each other and been able to work together. So in career tech ed, we're really good at gathering. By like roles. So the auto-teachers know each other and meet together, the counselors know each other and meet together, the directors. But in this case, we're bringing people together in cohorts who've chosen to apply and be together. And they represent multiple centers in all different roles. So we may have someone for every center in one of those cohorts. But we don't have anyone else necessarily who's doing the same job um as someone else in the cohort, or we only have a few. And the, the beauty of the relationships that is formed and the support they provide for each other and the way they're sharing. Of what they're learning in ways that are collaborative across districts is, is really. Amazing to watch and something they speak of being valuable. And this year, we've also added um virtual sessions in between the in-person sessions. And those allow people to come together once a month and talk about challenges, receive coaching. Um and basically um. People have really valued those sessions as well. And all of the professional learning aligns to the goals that are set forth in our Perkins State Plan. And then there's one other piece that comes out of the Equity Learning Cohorts. Um there's the National Summit for Educational Equity that is offered in Washington DC each year in April. And um Vermont was asked to submit a proposal to share the Equity Learning Cohort work we have developed as a model that other states might want to consider. So Marissa Barbieri, who is our Equity Learning Cohort facilitator, and I submitted a proposal. To present a workshop that was accepted and we will present our work um in April. And then two of the teachers who have participated in the Equity Learning Cohorts. Partnered together to submit a workshop proposal and their proposal was also accepted. So we'll be able to present. Our statewide vision and implementation model and they'll be able to talk about um what they're doing at the CTE center level based on their participation in the Equity Learning Cohorts. So I'm very excited about that. And then what comes next? It's a big time of looking at where we go from here in career technical education. And um I shared with you the link to the APA Consulting Report on CTE Funding and Governance and would just add that. The Agency of Education has a contract with APA to continue doing work for us to help model. Um. Funding systems and make recommendations about governance to continue to further strengthen our CTE system. We had an Integrated Adult Education and Training System Study Report and my. One sentence or two-sentence summary of that report for you would be that. Our systems aren't integrated to the, in a way that would maybe with the, I would presume would strengthen what we provide to Vermonters. Or make access easier. And despite that, we have strong outcomes, but what could we do if we had a more integrated system? And also, it highlights the fact that for adult career technical education. We don't have. It's a consistent funding system that provides equity in how adult CTE is provided statewide. Um. We're in the midst of Perkins State Plan revisions and I shared the draft plan revisions with you as well. And that's been a huge focus of our work over the past three months. And Lyle, is it you or someone else who has a hand raised?
I have a hand raised.
Okay.
I mean, I think I can sort of intuitively understand the difference between like a regular CTE program that's a high school level for eleventh and twelfth graders and the adult. CTE or Education and Training System, but are there practical differences? Like are, can you just spend a couple of minutes discussing?
Can. And, and I'll say that when I worked at Randolph Technical Career Center and Central Vermont Career Center, my job involved both a daytime and adult CTE programs. And adult CTE programs are typically offered um after the school day ends. And take advantage of the fact that we have CTE centers with lab and shop space that allow for people to come and in the community and get additional skills training. So they provide many of those certification courses. So they provide many of those certification courses that we've talked about for high school students. But they can be employer-sponsored, they can be people who may be working with the Department of Labor because they are underemployed or unemployed and need retraining. And most of those programs are probably shorter in duration and lead to a credential or certification rather than.
And are they the same general categories that are offered at the CTE centers?
Yes, but fewer, I would say. They tend to focus on health sciences, those construction trades areas, some of the welding areas, some of the IT areas, probably, I would say the areas where the right opportunity for an adult looking for additional skills and wages would be credential-based more than going on to a associate or college degree program.
Okay. So like, if you had a construction worker who wanted to get certified as an electrician, like they could do it that way?
Well, and of course Vermont's complicated again. So the, the apprenticeship courses are offered through Vermont State University, but they often use CTE center space. So there are all the different ways in which systems are integrated and collaborative and also separate. But yes, there are, so there are a variety of who provides what, but it's all designed to strengthen those skills that our workforce in Vermont needs. And some high school students do take advantage of the program and the Department of Labor has had money. So that if a student suddenly decides senior year that they really want a credential that, and they didn't attend CTE, they can participate in adult CTE with financial assistance.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I gave you a lot of information. Is there anything you really want to talk about or?
Ruth, I put something in the chat, but I'll just say, I'm just, of course, I'm biased in this, and so I will, I will say that. But I'm just so proud of and want to congratulate you as a leader in this space and your team and all of your efforts. I think you are doing such a great job to expand, sustain, really extend the work of our already top-notch CTE ecosystem in Vermont. And I just can't thank you enough for that. So I wanted to say that on the public record.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate that. Career technical education is just a really wonderful place to focus time and energy. And I have the privilege of working with really great teachers and really great administrators in our CTE system.
And one thing I've found over the years with Ruth is that equity is very important to her. She wants to make sure that students throughout the state will have a very similar experience, regardless of whether they're in Rattleboro or Newport or Central Vermont. And to go back to the adult ed piece, people may or may not know, but there are VSAC non-degree grants that support people who would like to go through the evening or adult programming. So there is a continuity of service from the high schools through to adulthood and on, and on to, to work experience. So, so it's great. And I too am also quite biased, so. So there.
Ruth, I'm curious. What are the plans to increase the number of students? And is there sort of a, a capacity limit with that number?
Yes, and I think that's one of the things we really asked APA to help us identify and quantify in, in ways that provide a more neutral look at that, right? Because all of us who work in the system see our pieces of it, but how do they look at everything and help us see that? We have centers that have programs that have waiting lists and have to turn away students. We have aging facilities, the fact that some of our CTE centers are able to provide high-quality CTE in buildings that were built in 1967 and have not had substantial renovations since. It amazes me what they're able to do. And then we have other centers that have space available, but students geographically don't have the ability to easily get to them. And we have to think more creatively about how we, how we make those opportunities available and better use unfilled spaces in some of our buildings. So there are those kinds of challenges, I think. But really, it's, we go back to for certain labs and shop spaces, we have many programs that are at capacity and we have more qualified students interested than our current aging facilities can handle.
Okay, thank you. Ruth, my hands up. I just wanted to add to that in that one of the pieces in the current legislative work that I didn't mention is really wanting, so we don't know what's going to happen with construction aid with that program. There's not really any money to kind of like launch that in any substantive way this year. But one of the things that's important for us is making sure that CTEs are not left out of that equation. And so that's a big piece of our CTE package as well that we, we, you know, it's not uncommon sometimes for the more traditional, if you will, K-12 system to, to kind of move forward. And, but we want to make sure that there's also funding available in terms of capital expenses, facilities, upgrades and things for our CTEs as well.
And also say, one of the things I'm hoping comes out of the APA report, and then Lyle, it's your turn again. But, but we have centers that have different levels of resources to support our students who need additional support in whatever way that may be. And right now, I think that's based on local budgeting pieces, the availability of resources. But again, if we're looking at a truly equity-informed model, how do we use data to inform what right staffing levels are to best ensure strong student outcomes and to help our students who may come with a skills gap in one area or another that we can help close while they're in career technical education? Especially when they can apply some of those learning areas to their hands-on academic, their hands-on technical content. Math and literacy can make, you can make significant gains in career technical education when you see the applied context for those skills. But we need, we need people to help us in our centers best maximize those outcomes. Lyle?
And my understanding is that industry leaders can help determine locally what offerings might be at a tech center that they consider they encourage offerings. Is there a process? I was surprised to hear, and I don't expect you to talk specifically about Randolph. I was surprised to hear that the dental assistant program was being closed because there seemed to be a real lack of dental assistants. But is there a process that tech centers need to go through to get permission to open and close programs?
Yes, and they're actually set forth in State Board rule, Lyle. And for Randolph, for example, they started a new program and they've had a hard time keeping it an instructor with the right qualifications out of industry. So it goes back to some of those bigger issues we're talking about in the APA report, which is how we retract. To be able to teach the certifications that someone needs to graduate from a dentist, a dental program, they need to have very specific skills credentials. And then you have the fact of what they can make in industry versus what they can make in teaching. And then you also have the realities of working with high school students and, and the difference that brings and how someone may say, teaching isn't exactly what I, I planned on, or I'm missing my professional practice in another way and how we balance that, right? So, so those are our challenges, I think. And yes, basically State Board will provide the program approval and re, and, and quality process assurance. And then Perkins Five requires that CTE centers every year do a, every two years do a comprehensive local needs assessment or update that assessment. And that's really a strong place for industry involvement.
Thank you.
Board members, are there other questions or comments? Mohammed?
I would like to thank you, Ruth, for your presentation, really. I very much appreciate it, like many people have already mentioned. You just spoke about licensed teachers providing services. And then later on, maybe finding, oh, this is not for me. I think there is a need of some professional development for licensed professionals to be working with students. Someone might be fully licensed in a domain, but that does not necessarily mean they have the ability to work with youth, middle school students or high school students. That's a whole another level of skills that someone would need to have to actually be able to provide the skills they came to teach. So as, no one would just want to be there every day managing students' behaviors and not being able to actually deliver what you came to do originally or initially. So it's a combination of both. Come with your professional skills, but also learn how to work with students. And by on students, also with the community members, like students' families and staff. So there's a lot into it. I just wanted to mention that piece as well, because there are many professionals out there who may not have those skills. Customer service should be number one as well.
Well.
Thank you, but thank you for all, yeah.
Yes, and in Vermont, we have what's called an apprenticeship license. And teach, CTE teachers who come out of industry have four years to work under that license as they move toward level-one licensure as an educator. And Vermont State University offers courses as a part of an approved sequence of courses for teachers to take to be, to earn that level-one licensure. But again, teaching is, is not easy. And, and there are people who come and really find that it's the right fit for them. And there are others for whom there are lots of factors to balance. And how do we strengthen the supports we provide to new teachers coming out of industry is something we think about a lot.
All right. Other comments or questions? Well, Ruth, I really want to thank you for coming and speaking with us today. This was a terrific presentation, great sort of crash course on, you know, what you've been doing. It's, it's really exciting to listen to, and I hope that you will come back and update us again in the future and just, you know, keep us posted with all of the continuing developments.
I would love to come back, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ruth.
All right. So I'm looking at the schedule and we're actually at time for item K. So again, I think I'd like to take that up since we have people waiting for us, and I don't want to hold them up unnecessarily. So unless anyone has any objection, I'm going to move to item K. And then we will take up EQS in 2200 after that. Just so we don't keep people waiting. So this agenda item is to discuss committee meeting recordings and minutes. And before we discuss this, the full board, what I'd like to do is move us into the executive session and meet with counsel, just so that we can kind of understand different legal considerations that might guide our discussion. So at this point, I will move the pursuant to one VSA, Section 313A1. The board finds the premature general public knowledge of confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the State Board of Education would clearly place the board at a substantial disadvantage.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded by Mohammed.
All right. Any discussion? I see Tammy and I see Kim.
I, I admit, I was a bit confused by, by the motion. Is it the intent to go in and receive some sort of legal advice and then to come back out of executive session and to have a discussion around sort of these issues? Or is it the intent to have the legal advice and the discussion both in executive session?
If the intent is to have the legal advice and any questions that board members might have answered by counsel in executive session? And then?
Then would we come back out and then ta, talk about sort of how we would move forward then? Is that, is that how that would work?
Yeah, well, we can't make a decision in executive session, so we would have to come back out of executive session to have that part of the discussion.
Okay. I guess I'm just confused about, like, what is it that we're doing in executive session and what we're doing in public session?
We're receiving legal advice in the executive session to inform the discussion that we're going to have.
And then the discussion is going to be in the public?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep. Kim?
I think my question was similar. I was understanding the, the conversation to be guided by statute, which is public. And so I was wanting to make sure that if there's something protected about the legal interpretation, I understand that. But I think it would be important that the conversation about our board's process and procedures regarding our public meetings happen in public, not in executive session. So I hope we'll, we'll keep our discussion to just that, which is privileged in our executive session.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. I will further move that the board enter executive session to receive confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal, legal services to the board pursuant to one VSA, Section 313A1, capital F. Is there a second? Seconded by Lyle. Any discussion? Kim?
I'm sorry. I just, I'm wanting to make sure, and maybe this is only regarding contracting. Is there, is it necessary that there be a finding of premature public knowledge would put the board at a substantial disadvantage?
That was the first motion.
Okay. I'm sorry. I really am listening. I was just, all right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion is approved. So board members, you have received the link to the executive session in your email. So at this point, you need to leave, completely leave this meeting and then join the executive session. And I will see you there momentarily. So I think we're back. So this issue is to talk about State Board of Education Committee Meeting Recordings and Minutes. And one of the things that I looked at in preparation for this meeting is what is required. So there's two different topics of conversation here. One is committee, well, one, one issue is recording and one issue is minutes. So try to keep those two separated. With regard to recordings, currently, what is required by law is only public comment hearings are required to be recorded. And I think it's one VSA, Section 313. Currently, the board's practice is, in addition to the public comment hearings, you know, we're statutorily required to record, we also record full monthly board meetings, and we also record special meetings of the full board. There has been conversation about whether committee meetings should also be recorded. So currently, we're already doing more than statute requires. You guys may be aware that there is a bill, it's S55, which is an act relating to authorizing public bodies to meet electronically under Vermont's open meeting law. This is a, you know, bill, it's not law yet, but the most recent version of that would seem to create a new requirement that meetings of the full board would be required. So we're already doing that. But it does seem to have a bug out that it turns advisory bodies, meetings of a board don't have supervision, control, or jurisdiction over legislative quasi-judicial tax or budgetary matters. So the question is, you know, whether the board can agree on a policy with regard to recordings. And that would be both meetings of the full board and committee meetings. Because again, we want to be thoughtful about, you know, how we approach this. I recognize, you know, statute might say one thing, but we want to be transparent. We want to be available to members of the public who might wish to access our meetings. But there are competing constraints that might make us think that, you know, we can strike a balance. So I will pause there. And, you know, what I'd like to do is make, you know, reach some consensus about committee meetings and whether those would be recorded. I think I'm not suggesting that we stop recording our monthly meetings or our special board meetings. So I, I'm really just focusing on committee meetings unless anyone else feels differently.
Jen, I just think it'd be important to recognize that special meetings or any special meetings of the board, and there had been an instance where we had not, or a couple of instances where we had special meetings of the board that haven't been recorded. But to clarify your intention with this conversation, is any meeting of the full board regular or special? For any purpose? You know, when the quorum requires that we are warning a meeting of the full board, special or regular, those special or regular, those meetings will be recorded. I'm understanding that correctly, I wanted to acknowledge that that hadn't been practiced in the last month.
Well, it's, so to your point, there there were two meetings that happened, I believe, one in December, maybe one in January, maybe, no, I think they were both in January, but they were warned as special meetings. I was very clear, both with board members and with members of the public and at the beginning of both of those meetings, that they were warned as special meetings due to quorum issues, but they were really an opportunity for the EQS committee and the twenty-two hundred committee to come together and have a joint working session. So, you know, my intent was that these were working sessions and it was kind of a super committee. But to your point, I think going forward, any meeting that is warned as a special meeting or a meeting of the full board, my, I'm not suggesting that we do not record those. So I want to assure you and members of the public that that that's not what I'm suggesting. The conversation is without the question about recording committee meetings. Brit, I see you have your hand raised.
I'm sorry, I thought I lowered it. I was just going to make the motion that we not that we not record any work sessions of subcommittees.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
And Richard, Rich, just to clarify, so so I'm clear what you mean by subcommittees, you're talking about whenever we do not have a a award meeting that for the full board, correct?
My my thought is a quorum of the full board because subcommittee.
A quorum of the full board, okay, so if it was sort of these two committees committees coming together. Anytime it's a quorum of the full board, then we would have them recorded, is what your motion is?
I'm I'm not moving to record because we do that now. That that's my, that's why a motion is just for any subgroups that would meet that aren't a quorum of the board.
I understand, thank you.
Any further discussion? Um, Kim?
Um, I just, I think it's important to recognize the competing concerns and that we value the importance of transparency. Our work relies on there being, at the committee level and at the full board level, relies on there being informed testimony and we will certainly capture any testimony that can be provided to us in writing in those minutes and otherwise I know we're going to talk about minutes, but while we are, I think it's important to note while we, for various constraints and other concerns, we won't be recording those subcommittee meetings. But we intend to have the body of that work as it moves to the full board, capture the essence of the work that was done that arrived there and that the minutes will include documents that are discussed and any testimony provided that is provided to us in writing. So I think that's probably pretty important in the absence of recording that we acknowledge what is intended to happen and I know we're going to take that up second, so.
But that's that's a good clarifying point. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, hearing none, the motion is approved. So moving on to the issue of minutes, and again, Kim, you you gave a nice preview of the conversation. So currently, under rule, I think it's eleven, no, it's twelve twenty-two, I believe, State Board of Rule, State Board of Ed, Rule twelve twenty-two, we follow Robert's Rules of Order and again, I looked into that. And, you know, what is required of Robert's Rules is you know, what the board does and and, you know, certainly there are times that we go beyond that and, you know, put in more detail. And I think, you know, to Kim's point, what we are proposing to do is this is the point of conversation, that our regular monthly meetings, you know, full board meetings, special meetings would continue to have the level of detail that they currently have. You know, in a, in an interest to be, you know, transparent and these are meetings where the full board is meeting as a body and is making a decision as a body. That is different than, you know, the the committee meetings where these are working group sessions where committee members might be taking testimony hearing from, you know, various members who have an interest in the work that the board is doing. So the question then is, with those committee meetings that are working sessions, whether we would just pair it back to Robert's Rules and again, include in the agenda packet and in links to the minutes any documents that are shared with the committee, you know, they're not privileged or confidential, that those would be included in the agenda packets. So we can have a conversation about this, I can entertain a motion.
I think, um, oh, go ahead, Lyle, go ahead.
I was just going to say, and maybe having an outline from someone who knows way more about Robert's Rules than I do about what that might look like. Just so that we're consistent in all aspects of our work.
Okay, yeah, I can follow up with that. You know, I can link to Robert's Rules. Worth noting too, like the VSBA, because again, I sit on a school board, they have provided similar advice to school boards. So I think, you know, in the interest of consistency, this kind of falls in line with that, but I can share that, you know, with board members and, you know, we can attach that also as a link to these minutes. And Maureen and Suzanne, of course, I would share that with you as well.
That would be great, just because I'm taking minutes at the for the Independent Schools Subcommittee, I just want to make sure I'm doing what's expected, so thank you.
Thank you. Other thoughts? Okay, hearing none, does anyone have a motion that they would like to make? Or would you like me to make a motion?
Go ahead, make a motion.
All right, I will move that committee meeting minutes of the State Board of Education follow the requirements of Robert Rules of Order, and I believe it's rule number sixty. And further that any testimony that is received during those minutes, we will invite members of the public who are sharing that testimony to include written something in a written format that can be attached, you know, as an agenda item or included as a link in the minutes just so that we have a complete record for members of the public who might not be able to attend that meeting. Was that a second, Kim, or did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a question when we're open for discussion.
The motion.
All right, seconded by Rich. Discussion, Kim?
Yeah, I'm, and I apologize because Robert's Rules and I aren't always exactly best of friends. So if I miss the opportunity to do the motion, I'm appreciating that not all public who attend our meetings are in a position to be able to submit their testimony or comments to the board in writing. And I think that we should probably establish some consistency in what we intend to do in those cases. Sometimes they are prepared, read testimony or some version of it, and other times it is apparent. There's any number of reasons why people may come with an interest in sharing their perspective on one thing or another that we are not getting in written form. So what is our consistent plan for that? And does it require that we amend our motion?
So it might be a friendly amendment. I do know in the past and Maureen, maybe you can help out. We've had people submit oral testimony where they call and leave a message and that gets transcribed and included. I think to the extent that members of the public are able to, you know, email something or prepare something in writing, I think that would be preferable only because, you know, that we're not asking agency staff to transcribe it, but understanding that there are times that people can't submit something in writing. I know that we have allowed, you know, oral testimony to be transcribed in the past. Am I remembering that correctly? Maureen, I don't think it's happened very often, but I can think of maybe at least once where that did.
Yeah, it could be that Suzanne did that. I don't think I've ever done that. It is possible that, yes.
Okay.
They could also mail something in, you know, snail mail, we can always post it at a later date.
Okay, yeah, and certainly I've gotten things where people have sent letters through the mail for public comment.
Well, I'm thinking, and Mohammed, I went, you can go ahead if you want, I just was following up on that train to figure out if we need an amendment, so. I was going to say, like, I'm thinking about our public hearings and full state board meetings that are recorded. Like, it is pretty onerous to ask someone who's coming to speak to us to then separately go and record it. It is recorded in those cases, so in full board meetings, those are recorded. And should the individual attending not have their public comment captured in some way as opposed to the association attending who like, very likely has scripted testimony? And I think we would I would not feel comfortable with the written testimony being or public comment having that privilege over any individual who chose to come and speak during our public comment period of any of our meetings. And so I think we should create some sort of consistent handling of orally submitted testimony in publicly warned meetings. And I I don't know if that's just this person came or, like, we don't transcribe that currently. But that, public hearings, we're capturing the essence of orally submitted testimony all the time. And we're doing it so that we can respond during Icar, Lcar with informed by orally submitted testimony. So I am concerned that written testimony being the only way that it gets into the minutes is limiting in a way that is inequitable.
So does that address your concern if we say that they can call the agency and leave a voicemail?
No, because they're coming to our meeting. Why make them do something second? Oh, by the way, don't forget exactly what you just said. And can you go call and record that? I think either it's important that it's recorded or we say this person called regarding special education. But like, I I just think it is inappropriate privilege to only capture in attached public testimony and acknowledgement of public coming to be heard in any one of our meetings.
Heather, I see your hand is, I mean, I I see Mohammed's hand is raised too, but is your hand raised in response to Kim, Heather?
Yeah, because, um, I mean, those are captured in in the in the meetings because we're talking about posting the videos.
Well, I think Kim's question is during committee meetings, which are not going to be recorded.
During committee meetings, I missed that. Okay, yeah, during committee meetings. Thanks for the clarification.
Mohammed?
Uh, Tim, I just wanted to remind us that Vermont is democratically changing. And I am a part of the world in Vermont that we have some folks who do not speak English or write in English. We're talking about accessibility and equity and communication. I I'm just inviting us to start thinking about how especially we're talking about education, hence we should be educating or try to, if I may say, extend what we have in education to those who really need it. I'm saying this just to say, someone might be seen as non-educated or non-English speaking person, but that does not mean they don't have interest in what we do. Or they they are actually encouraged to support their children in our schools. And I see a lot of parents in my area here that have not been educated, they did not get the opportunity, but they are there for their children. So I'm just inviting us to think of how we can think of translating documents, think of translating recordings, just to have them be a part of the communication and a part of the education. I know at the school levels, we try. But at the higher up, I I really encourage us to do something about that when we talk about equity and communication accessibility. Thank you.
So my thought, Kim, is that you know, certainly the public comment is going to be heard by committee members and you guys will be taking that in and it will inform the work of the committee that will then be brought before the full board. So I don't think that, you know, someone who who comes to speak is losing, you know, that connection and that ability to communicate their their view. So I think I'm not, I'm not worried that the content of the message won't be heard or received or acted on. I, so, I mean, I think that part, that's my biggest concern and I think that's, that will be addressed because the committee members will hear that public comment and will, you know, act on it accordingly. So I think, you know, until we have more resources, if people want to speak about whatever they're they're coming before the committee to speak about and if they want to, you know, follow up with a phone call, I mean, that that feels like a fair I mean, I I can leave a voicemail in thirty seconds. And then it's really the agency that then has to unpack that.
Right, and that seems far more onerous to both the individual and the agency than just saying early submitted public comment or written submitted public comment, like, will capture the person's name and the essence of their comment. And if they've submitted something in writing, it'll be attached to the minutes. I'd like to make that friendly amendment for committee meetings and minutes taken in that regard.
Okay, can you say that again? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like to make a friendly amendment that the public comments submitted during committee meetings will capture the name of the public to be heard and the essence of their comment. And if they have written testimony to submit, that will be attached to minutes.
Right, so I think what we're trying to avoid is the subjectivity of, you know, having someone summarize someone else's comments for them. So I think.
How about the subject matter of their comment?
Sure.
That should be discernible.
Mr. X came and testified about.
Concerns regarding special ed, concerns regarding definitions, concerns regarding whatever. Or or it doesn't have to be, it could just be about the subject matter. The subject matter and name of the of the public will be captured for the minutes.
Then I think it would be incumbent upon the committee to ask any members of the public who aren't submitting something in writing to say, please state your name and, you know, the the topic, not summary, but the topic of your testimony. Does that make sense?
Okay. So that's my friendly amendment. I don't know if you want to clean it up, but because I don't remember exactly the initial. I just was concerned that only those who come and speak with prepared testimony are going to have their public comment acknowledged through our minutes and that. So my amendment was intended to resolve that problem.
Well, and to be clear, our minutes currently indicate, you know, what members of the public came to speak during public comment. Like, we we do include that already. So that's not a difference.
Yeah, and we haven't had public for a little bit, so I would have to go back and look if we put it in public comment or others who attended. So I I'm not actually necessarily recalling, but.
I think Maureen both takes note, and Suzanne, but Maureen's here today, but take note of members of the public who appeared as well as members of the public who speak.
Okay, and it sounds like what we're going to add is that we'll attach prepared testimony to minutes and capture the name and subject matter of those attending during and speaking during public comment. Does that work?
Based on, it's going to be incumbent upon committee members to ask the public commenter to provide that subject matter.
Okay. And we can put that in our agendas, folks.
Okay.
Please be prepared to share your name and the subject on which you're interested. Please be prepared to share your name and the subject on which you're interested in speaking, or whatever. I think clarity and consistency is important, and I think, you know, not creating a second. The idea that a second phone call is going to clarify this when people who aren't reading from prepared testimony may leave a message that is not exactly the same as what they shared with us. So that doesn't solve anything. And hopefully this pairs it down and solves it. So it's at least acknowledged. And then the other thing I guess I will say is that I'd like for us, and I know this is more work on us as committee chairs, but to, and I think the independent schools committee does usually do sort of a cover of what they're submitting to us for consideration for action. But that at our regular updates, I think as committee chairs, we could do a one pager on what's gone on since the last state board meeting. That then if we have things we need to link to it, we can link to it, you know.
But that's a separate topic.
Yeah.
Let's focus on the minutes at the moment. And I'm going to pause there. I know there are other hands raised and Rich. I'm wondering
Do we need a second on the amendment?
Asking Rich, procedurally, do we need a second to the friendly amendment, or do we continue the discussion?
No, I think, because this is a pretty important thing. I think you're going to have to do two votes and you're going to have to have a second to the amendment, and then you're going to have to amend the main motion. Unless, I don't mind withdrawing mine and letting somebody else make a motion that encompasses everything.
I, I think it was my motion anyway.
Right. I'm sorry, you're right. Yes. I made the other motion. That was years ago.
Okay. So let me withdraw my motion. And I'm going to restate a motion. And then it will be seconded, and then we will continue the conversation. So my, my new motion is, oh, good Lord. My new motion is that committee meeting minutes will follow Roberts Rules of Order pursuant to State Board of Education Rule 1222 with regard to the content of the minutes. And anyone who has, any, any members of the public who have provided written comment, those documents will be included in the agenda packet if they are submitted in advance, or at a minimum, they will be attached to the meeting minutes. And members of the public who do not have anything prepared in writing will be asked by the committee members to identify themselves and to provide a brief subject matter of their testimony or their, their comment before they provide it. Is there a second?
I, I will second that, just as a point of order. I think whoever seconded it, your previous motion needs to withdraw their second too.
I don't know if it was ever, was it seconded? Maybe it was.
Well, it'd be good to know whoever's taking notes could tell us.
Maureen, did someone second the original motion?
I believe Richard did. I'm looking back. Hold on one second.
No, I know. I think I did. That's where I was confused, but it was so long ago.
It was long ago.
I think it was Richard too.
It was Richard.
I, I don't mind withdrawing my second, and I would like to second this new motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Rich, I see your hand up. And Lyle, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I just, I, I, real quickly, and because I, I haven't made all the meetings and because I kind of got put on the committee after the fact, I know there's been a lot of public input on rules that the, the board, his subcommittees have taken. And, you know, that's one of the things we're working on with Kim and, and Mohammed and, and the, the other group. Who records those? How, how are those given? Are those given in writing? Because if we actually take testimony for a subcommittee is getting input from people, it seems like we've done a lot of that already. And how has that been treated in the past? How has that been recorded? How has that been documented in the past?
I think it's been somewhat inconsistent. I mean, I think the, it, the minutes have reflected that you know, someone might have come and spoken, you know, either upon invitation of the committee or at the beginning of public comment. And so what we're looking for is, you know, providing consistency going forward.
And I think that's probably a fair characterization. And Tammy, let me know if you think differently, but often if the associations, for instance, or the folks from the field were coming to share our testimony, they would often come with written testimony that would be referenced. We'd either have it ahead, or they'd provide it for us after. And we'd have robust conversation in the earlier parts of our work before to inform what we ended up ultimately proposing to the full state board. And so I would think going back to minutes, those were more detailed. And if testimony was submitted in writing, it was attached. And then, you know, ongoing drafts were evolving and those were attached documents as we were having our conversations. So I think this establishes a slightly different norm moving forward than we had been practicing. And, and that's why it's sort of the importance of where we're capturing a degree of detail and where maybe we as chairs of those subcommittees, as we give updates to the full board, you know, capture whatever we think maybe documents that have been shared over that month gives a degree of that information that would have maybe otherwise been captured in the interim minutes. Because it's information to the full board. And does that clarify, Rich?
Yes, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Mohammed?
Just a quick reminder about the time I saw a notification on my screen, in case we need to get back to the public.
Oh, no, we're, we're in the public meeting.
I mean, public comments if we need anybody, sorry.
Oh, okay. Okay, any further conversation on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you. All right. So now we are going to go back. We need to do the EQS update and the 2200 update. So let me start first with Kim and Tammy for the EQS update.
Sure. Tammy, I'll start fill in if, if you don't mind, if that's okay. So Jennifer had drafted a memo to the Lcar committee to request an extension because we weren't going to be able to meet with their deadlines for submission. And the voluminous amount of comments we've received and the, some of the progression regarding alignment that really made it hard for us to incorporate everything we would have needed for the full board's consideration. So that extension on Jennifer's request to the Lcar is afforded for our work until June 5th, which means as we back into that, that original date was March 25th. With the extension, the expectation is we will get the full rule to Icar. It looks like Jennifer had predicted April 19th. That means we would expect to hopefully bring before you at the March meeting, a draft for consideration. But could it, as has happened in the past with rules approval, it often takes more than one meeting. And that would give us the opportunity to go as late as, I think our April meeting is the 17th, I believe. And there could be a special meeting in between there, not to foreshadow anything, but knowing that there'll be a very full update at the March meeting, if not, you know, formally recommended language for the full board to consider. We expect it to be a very close to that consideration. And they meet a couple, they meet like every week or every other week, I think, the Lcar committee does in session. So there'll be a number of different meetings that we would be able to get to them with the potential that we would still have the rule effective on the effective dates within the document, but effective for their June 5th deadline. So I think we asked for an extension that was reasonable. They took it up at a meeting that Sarah and I attended. And there were no questions. It was a very thorough memo, Jennifer and Sarah, thank you. And so that was clean and passed no problem. So that's where we are on the win. I think it is helpful maybe to just show you all maybe the probably the biggest, among the bigger areas of attention that our work has received is regarding the definition of discrimination and the statement of purpose. And Sarah has what the committee has most recently discussed as our consensus amendments to that language. No formal action by the committee, but with a lot of good thinking, conversation and well-informed. We, I want to share with you and share, sharing it here. It'll be attached with the minutes. And Sarah, if you may be able to read better than I, do you mind pointing out those changes? And then we'll show you the full statement of purpose, but focus you on how some of these definition changes were then incorporated into the language in the statement of purpose.
Sure. Before I accept the mic, I just want to acknowledge Rich's hand is up. And so I don't know if you want me to continue or if someone can see Rich's hand.
Not mistakes, sorry.
This leftover. And Tammy, was there anything else to add for context before Sarah goes?
Not on this point, but I do have some additional things to say about, about the process, but let's talk about discrimination.
Thank you.
Okay, um, background, there has been conversation about discrimination language. It began in August with a full board meeting. And last night, the EQS committee had some further conversation, as they have been having, about revisions to two parts related to discrimination. The first is in the definition section. It is on your screen. Kim, do you want me to read the original one, or do you want me to just read the proposed?
I think you could probably read the proposed as long as that doesn't have us lose the eyes on the language and noting that the highlighted language that's there on the screen, and it'll be attached to the minutes, is, are the areas that were beyond that which is currently protected in the state and federal statute. So I think it'd be okay unless anybody feels differently to just read the proposed new language for the definition of discrimination.
So I'm going to read the proposed new language, which does reflect the committee's decision to make changes based on conversation around their authority to extend protections to protected classes at, at the board level, to new protected classes under state and federal law. So the, the new definition is discrimination is intended to describe any exclusion, restriction, or preference based on any protected class consistent with state and federal law that has the purpose or effect of denying or impairing the recognition, enjoyment, or exercise of an individual's fundamental rights. Discrimination is practiced by individuals and groups and is expressed systematically through the structures, laws, practices, and policies of public and private institutions, employers, and organizations. Good?
I don't know if folks want to see the the
Well, I think, if I could try one here, Kim, I don't know that we are trying to open this up for discussion at this point. Unless the board wants to, the EQS subcommittee is continuing to work hard on this definition and some of the other things that were included in the public comment. But since a memo was written about this, we thought it was important for the full board to see already what the EQS subcommittee is working on with respect to language on advice of counsel. So this is more of an update. I, I'm cautious about trying to open up a larger, both because we're 1:05 in the afternoon. We've been at this since 8:30 this morning. But also I don't know that the board has had enough time to sort of think this through. But I think what, at least I hoped we would do is be able to signal to everyone, particularly given Jennifer's memo last week, that, you know, a lot of work has been done. There's been a lot of discussion about this, as you saw from sort of the historical account. And that at this point, the subcommittee is working to really sort of refine and finalize some language that we will be bringing back in front of the full board that we think addresses in the main concerns.
Yeah, thanks, Tammy. Agreed. And I was going to just suggest that we scroll down so that the adjustments to the statement of purpose could be taken in context with the change in definition. So yes, thank you. Go ahead. And I think for that, I would imagine you should read all the red, Sarah, if you can.
All the red, okay, sure. So now I'm reading the statement of purpose. And the first two paragraphs, I won't read as Kim just indicated because they aren't, the committee has not elected to make any changes to those based on what was submitted as a proposed rule in that stage of the rulemaking. The third paragraph will now read, "These rules prohibit discrimination against any student pursuing an education or participating in the general life or activities of a school because of or based on any actual or perceived protected class consistent with state and federal law. No student shall be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subject to discrimination under any educational program or activity as the result of or based upon the student's race, gender, color, creed, national origin, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, or disability, or any other reason set forth in state or federal nondiscrimination requirements." Then in the next paragraph, most of the paragraph has not been changed, but I'm going to read the full paragraph, Kim, if that, I think that makes sense. Okay. Because we did go back and forth about what parts to change and left a lot there. And I think that's important to read. "In addition to the nondiscriminatory protections in Section 2113, discrimination against any student pursuing an education or participating in the general life or activities of a school as a result of or based upon ethnicity, past, language, and linguistic diversity, socioeconomic status, religion, housing status, and non-citizenship or immigration status is contrary to the board's intent for all students to experience an equitable, anti-racist, culturally responsive, anti-discriminatory, and inclusive and learning environment." And then finally, only a minor change was made, I'm sorry, to the next section, simply to reflect a conversation with the the committee last night to expand the word school to be very clear. And to demonstrate that these rules further require each supervisory union, school district, I'm sorry, this is also going to say supervisory district. It just hasn't been updated yet pursuant to last night's conversation. And independent school to which these rules apply to strive for a culturally responsive pedagogy that critically examines and imparts a comprehensive historical and socially conscious understanding of, and then A through D remains unchanged. The final, what's that?
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you, Sarah, but you can go ahead. I think I think as I'm seeing it, the other changes are related to governance structure. And for context, again, that is another consistency we were looking for in the document that to the extent available within statute, these rules are applying at the highest governance level that is allowable and through statute. And where ambiguous, again, sort of back up at the highest governance level to address concerns for inconsistency across NSU, or as we often see across the state. So were there more? I think that that was everything under statement of purpose. Okay.
And I I'd just like to clarify that this is, first of all, you guys have done a lot of work. It's nice to see this sort of nearing completion. But just to reassure members of the public, this is the language that has come out of the EQS committee. It has been, I think, really, really carefully considered, but it has not come before the full board, and we are not having that conversation today. You know, we're waiting for a later time for that to happen. And I'm assuming, Sarah, that you're also going to be bringing these recommendations to the 2200 committee so that the language will be in alignment.
And I did find a typo in what I just presented, so just for the record, I'm going to correct it and send it to Maureen so the right one is posted.
Thank you, I saw it, as little as I can see when I'm reading. But, and I think the other thing to know, as you bring that up, the sharing of information back and forth. One of the things that has been helpful sort of since we finished with the two special meetings, has been the refocusing of the EQS Committee on sort of our body of work in the context of recalling the extensive vetting that happened with the document before the state board approved it, and then taking into account public comment received and legal review, sort of narrowing our changes to the document as much as possible to be in that vein. I know, wearing two hats and sitting on both committees, I know that 2200 moved really quickly and didn't have the opportunity for the same 30 meetings worth of public comment and testimony and other bodies of work that the EQS Committee had. So we sort of zoomed back and refocused on our work as an EQS Committee and trying to have the framing be more narrow for adjustments that we make to be more closely or more tightly aligned with public comment and legal review versus any restructuring or anything that may have been considered as a path, but really had no action happen at that time. So I just want to clarify that and appreciate the commitment of the committee to help us move through the rest of these public comments and see how that's reflected in actual language that we can take action on as a committee and then bring to all of you. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
So if I, I know we're running late, just to add to that, I just want to be clear about sort of process here. So we're going to have a couple more meetings and finish processing public comment. We do have, we've had our legal review by Sarah. We're integrating some of that input from that, but the intent is to try to get this document turned back around to the full board to review. Much like what we did before, we'll get the document back to the board to have a discussion about, but probably not take a vote at that meeting. Because I suspect there'll be lots of conversation around that, and then we'll take a meeting, vote at a second meeting. So just stay tuned on that. I think we certainly want to land this plane here in the next, you know, I would say 68 weeks. The EQS is operating on its own timeline, so we're going to try to get this landed, you know, as quickly as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on, this Rule Series 2200 update, I can provide that. Since our January meeting, we've only had one committee meeting on January 25th where we almost finished our first pass-through public comment. I think we just have a small handful of comments left to go through. And then we had some questions for Sarah, you know, research that we wanted her to do, proposed language to come up with, so we had canceled, we'd had other meetings scheduled that we ended up canceling just to give Sarah time to do that work. And we are looking to have some meetings coming up the week, oh, what is it, the week of March 5th, I believe. We've scheduled three meetings, the week of, if I have that right, March, maybe it's the 4th, the week of March 4th, the week of March 11th, and the week of March 18th. So those will be posted shortly. And hopefully, we two will be nearing completion, starting to wrap up our work as well. Any comments or questions? Okay. So just making sure I have not forgotten anything. I think this brings us to future meeting planning. So as Tammy forecasted, we will have an extensive EQS update at our next meeting, and depending on where you guys land, it might be that the discussion happens at our monthly meeting, and then there's a special meeting after. But probably there will be a robust discussion at our March meeting, and I think board members can anticipate a special meeting as well just to, you know, when the time comes, to vote these out. I also have, you know, there will be a 2200 update. We are also looking at a presentation from presidential scholars. We had invited them to our meeting last year, and we pushed it out a month just to give them more time to come, and then also to hear from the committee that solicits the nominations for presidential scholars to help spread the word, because they would love to have more schools participating. And as I mentioned earlier, there will be a mid-session legislative update. And we'll see what else. Any other things that I'm forgetting? All right. So that brings us to public to be heard. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board, you can raise your hand or press star five if you're calling in to raise your hand. I know we're a little off schedule. Amanda, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you so much for the public comment. I've been waiting for all day. And listening to the entire meeting. So I, today I just want to, I noticed that there was a letter rebuking some of my testimony in the State Board of Education. I just want to acknowledge your letter and just say that we have different representations of how, as a public, member of the public view the whole process, and I think that's the bottom line, is that the way that the process has been laid out was not clear and was not really open to have all these discussions. And I want to thank the EQS Subcommittee today for giving a little bit of fresh air around this process and around this conversation around discrimination, which we continue to have in the public sphere, about why it's important that we protect our students and that that is our role to like really shelter them with love and all the protections that they can have. And I know this might be something that the board's not going to be able to do, but I do hope that we can, that that is a state board to show the legislator that that is needed. We do need protections for a lot of students who are not sheltered right now. So I think that we will continue to have people really concerned about the way that our process works and like the conversation that you all had about recording or not recording the meetings. It's just, it's an interesting one because I want to echo what Bor Mohammed said around our students who are not English-speaking, or families who are not English-speaking, and when we start to think about them a little more in this process. So thank you again, and I just want to, you know, again, say that what I testified to the state board is what I experienced and what we as members of the public have seen. So thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard? Just make sure I'm not missing anybody here. I don't see anyone. So that brings us to a motion to adjourn.
Aye, so move.
I'll second it.
All right, moved by Tammy, seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please raise your hand and signify by saying nay. Any abstentions? None, we stand in adjournment. Thank you all very much. I hope you have a great afternoon.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.